Good evening. Welcome to the August 10, 2022, meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for, gosh, it's been so long. Row call.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Hoorah.
Councilmember Weiss.
Please stand for our invocation. Tonight, we have Father Charles Wright from the Prince of Peace Abbey.
Let us pray. Divine source of all that we have, we turn to you for strength, wisdom, and prudence in these troubled and changing times. We are grateful for your bounty that we enjoy and when we see in superabundance. We acknowledge our limit in dealing with the vast and uncertain course before us, especially in attending to the finite amount of resources supplied by your providence. We know that the true test of a government is its concern for all who are most vulnerable, especially the homeless. Only through your wisdom can solutions be found with reason and especially with the love that is so necessary for the cooperation of diverse and at times contrary factions. Oceanside is a blessed place, and we ask for your protection and continued supply of worthy stewards to keep it so. And finally, we hold up to you those who dedicate their lives to protecting it: the police, the fire personnel, paramedics, and the military, ever so present and ever so faithful. So with these deepest requests, we seek all them in your divine name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Father Charles. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And we have a couple of very special guests today, tonight. First of all, I'd like to call Kristi Hawthorne over to the circle here. Kristi has done a wonderful thing, and that is she has done, it's the third revision, right? Third revision of the history of Oceanside, which we all are so very, very proud of: being here, working here, you know, living here. And the, when I first met Kristi, I thought she had been here for generations because her love of the history of Oceanside just showed in all the detail that she would give and the stories that she would relate about people who had lived here, had walked the streets of Oceanside, who were responsible for, you know, for what Oceanside is now, what Oceanside now is. It's been amazing, Kristi. So you are the executive director for the, the director of the Ocean Side Historical Society. And I present to you Kristi Hawthorne and her new book that is available and just great. You have to look at it. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Esther. Hi. Thank you for having me, City Council Mayor. I appreciate that. I want to give the city clerk a book for the city's record, so they have it. Gigi Gleason donated 10 of the books to the Oceanside Public Library, so they're available at the library, they're available at the Oceanside Historical Society. But I really do love Oceanside. Oceanside has been my hometown for nearly 40 years. It'll be 40 next year. And I love Oceanside. I love its history. I love the opportunity to share it. We are located at 305 North Nevada. We have a small museum, thanks to the city of Oceanside. So if you're able to come and visit us, I'd love to talk to you about history. The city of Oceanside is so diverse and has such a rich history of all of its people. And that's what I really attempted to bring together in this latest book. It brings the history of Oceanside all the way to 2022, and includes so many different accounts and stories of different peoples here in Oceanside that make Oceanside the wonderful city that we live in today. Also, before I let you go, just wanted to let you know that tomorrow night, the Oceanside Theater Company is hosting the Historical Society. I'll be at Mysteries and Histories Live at 7:30 at the Brooks Theater. If you're interested, I'll be at the Write On Oceanside event, the Authors' Event at the City Plaza on Saturday. We have a downtown history walk Saturday morning, and I'll do another Histories and Mysteries Live on Sunday afternoon. And again, that's with the Oceanside Theater Company. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you, Mayor Sanchez, for having me.
Thank you, Kristi. If we could have a picture, though. And if I could, and if I could say that we're talking, if you look at the book, if you read the book, and you have to, the beautiful pictures and stories about several of our neighborhoods, including the East Side neighborhood and South Oceanside, and all of the kind of the really iconic places that we have in Oceanside and the very iconic people, again, who kind of led Oceanside to, to being a city. So. Thank you, Kristi. Thank you. And now we have the business, the mayor spotlight on our newest business, or our business, who is actually has an anniversary coming for this year. So come on down, Scott Ashton and Captain Joe Caciola. Did I say that right? Caciola. So I feel like, you know, we've had, we've seen the history here in Oceanside, and it's just been so wonderful to have you, Captain Joe, for everything that you've given to our city and, of course, you know, the contributions with the Chamber of Commerce and, and really just investing in our city and, and working with all of the folks at the harbor. Thank you so much for what you do. And I'm sure Scott has a few things that he would like to say about you in your honor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to chair the floor this evening with Captain Joe. Just, it's a real honor. Like many of the great people in our community, Captain Joe first came to Oceanside via the U.S. Marine Corps. And, yeah, and went to graduate school and during that time served as a deckhand. And then in 1982, he purchased the Sea Star, and he's been serving our community very well since that time, providing access to sport fishing, educational opportunities, burials at sea for our community members. So we really appreciate what Joe has done. We had the opportunity to feature, feature Captain Joe in our most recent magazine. There's, last I knew, there's some copies out there by the elevator, but it's also online. And if you want to do a deeper dive and learn more about Captain Joe, that's a great opportunity. But I'll give the floor to the captain at this time.
Well, thank you, Scott, and thank you, Mayor Sanchez and the council. This is kind of a milestone for me, my business, which is the Sea Star Charters. As Scott had mentioned, I've been down in the harbor, actually, for at least 50 years. Forty of those 50 years, though, is with, been with my own business. And forty, yeah, this is our 40th anniversary. And, yeah, it's just me, me and the boat. But, you know, when you're sole proprietor, you've got to keep your eye on the prize and just keep moving forward, and that's what I've tried to do. And we are very lucky, just about five years ago, we partnered up, I did, with the Flagler Institute and with my other partner, Ernie Prieto, and we created the Oceanside Sea Center. So if you have an opportunity, come down to our sea center. We've got a thousand gallon aquarium down there. We run sport fishing trips, we run educational trips, whales and dolphins, we do a lot down there. But personally, for me, I just want to thank the community for supporting me, my business, for all these many years. As Scott was saying, I've managed to diversify enough to keep me in business. Part of that was with the floating science labs that we do with schoolchildren. I've taken out over 15,000 kids now on floating science labs. And then we also have our youth fishing program that we do each year. We just took, yesterday, we had the kids out from Melba Bishop Rec Center, and nearly 15,000 of kids have come out sport fishing with us on that program. And the burials at sea that we do, laying our loved ones to rest. And we also serve our military veterans with military honors when we do that for them. So we do a lot, but I tell you, we couldn't accomplish it without all of you and the support of our community. So I have to thank you all for, for helping me get here to where we're at tonight. Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and have a picture here. Did you want anybody else to join us?
Come on up, partners.
There you go.
Yeah. Ernie Prieto and Chubi Socobeda, they are our partners at the Sea Center. Chubi is the director of the Flagler Institute Environmental Research, one of our partners there at the Sea Center.
Congratulations. Congratulations, your 40 years. Thank you. You have the city attorney report?
Thank you. The city council met earlier today at 3:30 in closed session to discuss several items. There was no meeting on item one, which was conference with labor negotiator. Item two was litigation involving travelers casualty insurance versus Mahackney Animal Hospitals at all. That item has been continued and will be re-noticed for August 24. The council also met on the existing litigation of Centeno versus City of Oceanside, case number 21 CV 1923. That was an informational only briefing. There's no action under the Brown Act to report. Finally, the city council met on a tort claim involving Valentin Sanchez Garcia, GC 202200069. There's no reportable action under the Brown Act on item 2B1. Finally, the city council met on item three, involving the public employee appointment, the city manager's position. And I can report by a vote of five to zero, the city council has voted to appoint Jonathan Borrego as the city manager. And the terms and conditions of his employment agreement will be considered at the August 24 city council meeting.
Thank you. And I would like to say that we did get several emails when, when it was announced that we were looking for our new city manager for, you know, very precious city of Oceanside, asking to be part of the process in terms of, you know, having like community panels and things like that. And in working with Jonathan, it became really clear that he really, really wanted the job. And he's very, very familiar, of course, with, with the city, certainly an expert on development services. And I have really watched him on the other stuff that he's, he really had nothing to do with prior to taking on this interim position, especially in terms of the community and, reaching out to the community and resolving some of the community issues. As a strong city manager form of government, I really feel like Jonathan has really stepped up. And I have high hopes for you, Jonathan, to really address some of these issues. And so welcome as our city of Oceanside city manager, and I wonder if you could say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. I really wasn't prepared to say much tonight because, being the person that I am, I was going to wait till the next meeting when the agreement is signed and everything, but obviously I'll take the opportunity now. I will share that when I came to the city of Oceanside about five years ago, I immediately fell in love with the community. It's such a wonderful, diverse community. The people here, the longstanding residents that are here, the longstanding businesses, is really something special. And to be placed in a position where I have a responsibility to continue the oversight of all the great things, all the great programs that have made this city such a wonderful place, is, is an honor. And absolutely, the community has my 100% commitment that I'll do the best to serve this community to my best ability. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention that we have an incredibly strong management team. And I've had many conversations in this past week with some of you, also with my management team, about all the things that I know that we can accomplish because we have such a great team. And of course, a great city council to provide us the support that we need to really make some significant accomplishments to make this city even a better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we do have an announcement that item number 27, right, 27, has been polled. So if you were here for that, we are not going to be discussing it. If you signed up for it, certainly I'll entertain your comments. Do we have anybody that signed up for item number 27?
Not at the moment.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we are now on consent, our consent calendar items. Those are items five through 22. Is there a motion to?
I'll move to approve.
Approve. There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, second. Please vote.
Peter. Peter.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We're now on general items. Item number 23 is affirmation of alternative B as a preferred plan for the second phase of the city's comprehensive general plan update. That's GPU Phase Two. We have a report by Mr. Russ Cunningham, our principal planner. Mr. Cunningham?
Mayor Sanchez, councilmembers, good evening. I'm Russ Cunningham with the city's planning division. It's my privilege, really, to be managing the city's first comprehensive update of its general plan with support from planning division staff, including Rob D. Mohousky, Shannon Vitale, and Stephanie Cervantes. The first phase of this effort, you'll remember, was completed in 2019 with the adoption of the economic development element, the energy and climate action element, and the city's first climate action plan. The second and culminating phase of the general plan update involves the revision of the remaining seven general plan elements and the preparation of two focused planning documents, one that seeks to balance housing growth with farmland conservation in the Southmore Hills area, and another that seeks to facilitate revitalization of the city's major east-west commercial corridors. In keeping with best practices in long-range planning and the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, our GPO, excuse me, GPU update team has prepared two project alternatives, one of which we recommend as the preferred plan for this second phase of the GPU. We prepare project alternatives to explore different paths to a desired destination, essentially. In this case, the destination is outlined in the community vision, reviewed and accepted by the city council in November of last year. Alternatives allow us to consider the interplay of policies, market forces, and other factors like population growth, new technologies, the city's vulnerability to natural hazards, social equity, et cetera. The exploration of alternatives provides additional opportunities for community engagement. Community input on the initial set of project alternatives presented to the planning commission in late March of this year motivated the project team to make some fundamental changes to the alternatives, changes that I'll share with you in a moment. And then finally, SEQA guidelines, section 15126.6D, requires that environmental impact reports identify and assess a reasonable range of feasible alternatives to a proposed project, and then evaluate and compare the environmental impacts of these alternatives. It is likely the project EIR will study both of the alternatives before you this evening along with a no-project alternative. I noted that the community vision, excuse me. I noted that the community vision reflects the destination we hope to reach within the planning horizon of the updated general plan, which extends through 2050, the next nearly 30 years. The fundamental overarching goal of the community vision can be expressed this way: The city will accommodate anticipated housing and employment growth in ways that promote quality of life, public health, and safety, economic diversity, environmental quality, social equity, and state and regional priorities. Both of the GPU Phase Two project alternatives before you this evening are consistent with the community vision and this goal. Both of these alternatives are predicated on the smart growth vision that is outlined in the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan, the policy version of which has been delivered to Caltrans to fulfill our grant agreement with this state agency, and the regulatory version of which, that's the specific plan, is now being prepared by staff and our consultant partners. We expect to have a draft of the corridor-specific plan available for public review in the fall of this year, and I'm happy to discuss the corridor's plan in more detail, should you be interested. So there isn't a vast amount of daylight between the two project alternatives, in part because they both adhere to the community vision, but perhaps more fundamentally because at this stage in the city's development history, infill and redevelopment within our urbanized areas are really the principal ways to accommodate, and some might say the most sustainable ways, to accommodate the housing and non-residential growth that we anticipate over the next 30 years or so. I think it's fair to say that the project alternatives are driven at least as much by certain on-the-ground realities, existing conditions, as they are by community values and priorities. So one of the more important shared assumptions between the two alternatives is no change to current allowances for housing and agritourism in Southmore Hills. And I'd like to provide you with a little bit of background. Over the past year, every public discussion of the general plan update has been dominated by concerns about the future of Southmore Hills, with the vast majority of documented community input expressing opposition to staff's recommendations, as outlined in the draft Southmore Hills policy framework that came before you last year. This focus on Southmore Hills has made it difficult to bring attention to and solicit feedback on broader citywide issues related to the general plan update. We thus determined several months ago that it is best to separate the Southmore Hills planning process from the general plan update, and for now, assume no change to current allowances for housing and agritourism in this particular area. I want to emphasize that we have not paused or slackened on the Southmore Hills planning effort. This effort continues under Rob D. Mohousky's management. In response to community feedback, we've recently held two community forums on Southmore Hills, one focused on farmland conservation easement acquisition, and another just yesterday on agritourism. These were both quite well attended. After what we believe to be considerable due diligence on the part of staff and, and the consultant team, we continue to find that our recommendations regarding clustered housing and allowable residential densities, with some modification, remain the most appropriate way to not only reduce the prospect of more planned development plans and two-and-a-half-acre subdivision, residential subdivision in Southmore Hills, but also the most appropriate way to support catalytic Tier Two agritourism uses in the area, which was a topic of discussion yesterday. So some other shared assumptions. Housing growth, essentially consistent with historical RENA allocations for the city of Oceanside. Preservation of single-family neighborhoods, we propose no fundamental changes to land use or zoning standards, development standards, for our single-family neighborhoods. Of course, you are aware of state preemptions of local land use authority, ADU legislation, SB 9 that allows up to four dwelling units on certain single-family properties. These are things we don't have much control over, but in terms of what we are bringing forward in the general plan, we are looking to preserve the integrity and the character of our single-family neighborhoods. And we are looking at some concentration of growth in the Oceanside Boulevard corridor, not, not a significant concentration, but some concentration, given the presence of the Sprinter line and the six designated smart growth opportunity areas around the Sprinter stations, the centrality of this particular corridor, the access to employment and recreational facilities within this particular corridor, and the opportunity that revitalization of the Oceanside Boulevard corridor presents to restore Loma Alta Creek. So those are some of the commonalities between the two scenarios. Here's alternative A relative to alternative B. Alternative A assumes more overall housing growth on the order of 20,000 new housing units between now and roughly 2050. More growth in the retail and hospitality sectors, though just slightly more. Some conversion of industrial land to mixed use, particularly within the Oceanside Boulevard corridor, and I'm happy to speak to the particulars of that. Somewhat less robust commercial in mixed-use development. As you know, it's been a challenge to, to encourage and get the development community to provide a robust commercial component, ground-floor component in mixed-use projects, and that's something that we want to work on going forward. And no low-intensity, low-impact industrial uses in commercial districts, though we are looking to have general plan policies and zoning standards that would allow certain types of industrial uses in our commercial districts going forward. And then finally, more change in single-family neighborhoods occasioned by those state preemptions that I mentioned a moment ago. Alternative B relative to A assumes less overall housing growth, closer to 17,000 new housing units over the next 30 years, less growth in retail and hospitality, though only slightly less, less conversion of industrial land to mixed use. And I want to emphasize that we're not promoting really much conversion of industrial land to mixed use. And again, I can speak to where specifically we think that is appropriate. More robust commercial in mixed-use projects, some low-intensity, low-impact industrial uses in commercial districts, so making our commercial districts more friendly to these types of uses, and also reserving our industrial zoning for industrial uses, which is not the case today. And less change in single-family neighborhoods occasioned by the, the state preemptions that we've discussed. So these tables, these graphs show the distribution of projected growth, both in the residential and non-residential sectors, under the two alternatives. So blue is alternative A. You can see some concentration in Oceanside Boulevard of, of housing growth. You can see some increased development of industrial square footage under the second graph there, with more growth in that sector under alternative B. And I'm happy to return to this graph if it's helpful. So our preferred plan, what staff recommends, is alternative B because we believe it tracks more closely to historical growth and our RENA numbers over the last three or four housing element cycles. It provides for a higher jobs-to-housing ratio. It provides for a higher jobs-to-housing ratio, and it reserves more industrial land for industrial uses. Our next steps in this process, let me just say, we're hoping to get your affirmation for Alternative B, but we did want to take the opportunity to share with you some next steps. We will be refining the general plan goals and policies in these six general plan elements, and we will be hosting open house events in October, the 11th and 18th of October, to essentially roll out detailed outlines of each of these elements for community review and input. We're in the process of preparing that Smart and Sustainable Corridor-specific plan that builds on the policy document. We are preparing the project description for the environmental document and identifying major environmental issues, and we are assimilating recent community input on Southmore Hills into the community plan. I do want to emphasize the extent of community outreach that's been conducted as part of this overall effort. We have built an interested parties list of over 1,600 individuals. We have conducted over 50 community meetings of various types. We have put out multiple surveys, including a survey targeted to our Spanish-speaking community. We have met with dozens of interest groups who have reached out to us to have ad hoc meetings on specific concerns, and we have had literally hundreds of conversations with individual community members, and those conversations continue to this day. So I thank you for your time, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. How many speakers do we have?
We have one speaker on this item.
One, okay.
Katie Taylor?
I'm going to be real brief and real quick. None of us likes the growth that's happening in our single-family neighborhoods, whether it's South Oceanside, Fire Mountain, or anywhere around our city, but there's one solution and one solution only because all our planning commission dues can refer back to what the stranglehold from Sacramento. All our planning, the city council can do is say, boy, we better not get sued, and we're going to have to go along with some of this excessive growth. So anybody here, the solution is real simple. You need to get Gavin Newsom on the phone, and his number is 916-445-2841, and if you vote for a Democrat in November, you're to blame.
Thank you. To the council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
We have staff come up. I have a quick question. There's a resounding message that has been presented while I've served as a council member about the City of Oceanside's jobs-to-housing ratio, and there was a 2011 Sandag report that notated that the City of Oceanside had a .7 job-to-housing ratio, and how that ratio works out is the number of housing units in comparison to the number of active jobs available in a city, and it's been repeated time after time after time on this dais that we have one of the worst job-to-housing ratios in the county, and I'm actually a member of Sandag and have confirmed with myself and both with city staff that that is, in fact, not true. The number of jobs in our city compared to the housing units is actually pretty average. We're slightly over 1%. And so what I would like is an answer from staff to confirm that our job-to-housing ratio is not the worst in the county and that we're actually pretty average.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Rodriguez. We do not typically, we do not include in the jobs-housing calculation jobs supplied to Oceanside residents on Camp Pendleton, which obviously is in proximity but not within our city. I think that's a significant factor in the number that does get ruled out regularly. We also don't count employment in home-based businesses as well. So I think if we did incorporate that information, we would find probably a fairly significant uptick in the jobs-housing balance, and no, we are not at the bottom of the list when it comes to jobs-housing in the region.
Okay. Could staff and through the city manager's office, could you prepare a memo for council so that that information could be made known as fact and misinformation cannot be presented on the dais that we have the worst job-to-housing ratio in the county, because that's absolutely not the case? We actually have increased our employment substantially, and we're actually, based on my last assessments and information I've sent to Mr. Breggo, we're actually on the upper half of the echelon with the other 18 jurisdictions, or 17 other jurisdictions as far as the amount of jobs we have here in Oceanside. So if you, would you be willing to, if I can get support from the dais, they can pass that along to us, so we have that available for our constituents?
Yes, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weiss.
So Mr. Cunningham, as part of all this, I mean, the last presentation, there were a number of e-blasts that you had sent out to everyone, and you mentioned all of the community outreach that you have been doing so far, but you also mentioned in the beginning that as part of the SEQA document, let's just say we choose Plan B as the preferred alternative, you're going to be analyzing A and a no-project alternative.
That's correct.
So at some point, at some point in the future, however, so when would you expect the EIR to come before the council for final certification?
So final certification, Councilmember Weiss, would occur when we bring before you what we hope to be the final complete package, the updated general plan elements, the corridors plan, and possibly, if we can resync Southmore Hills community plan, that component as well.
Well, obviously, it's not going to happen next month.
No, sir.
So more than likely, at least 12 to 18 months off.
We're still hoping to deliver this project to you in a final form next summer.
Okay. So at that time, the opportunity will be there to select the preferred alternative, Alternative A or no-project alternative?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
Then I'll move approval of staff recommendation for Alternative B as the preferred alternative.
All right. There's a motion and a second. No other lights. I actually have read the Economic Development Report that was done by the Economic Development Commission. That included a lot of data that does show that we do have one of the worst jobs-to-residence ratio in the county, with over 60% of our workforce driving an average of 22 miles to work in one car. So those are the kind of things that I'm sure are being addressed by our document in ensuring that we have jobs here. Perhaps it's not the kind of jobs, you know? Certainly, we don't have the kind of, we're not looked at as having like being the regional job centers that, say, Carlsbad is, and with what is happening in Carlsbad, then there are those funds from Sandag to do more like kind of transportation projects to try to cut down on traffic. So I hope that we do get more jobs, better-paying jobs in Oceanside, and certainly, Alternative B would allow for that. So I'm in support of this. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, and actually, if I could call up Kathy Nykel from Main Street Oceanside, who I happened to wanted to call at the beginning of the meeting, so I apologize to you, Kathy. And then, of course, we'll go back to number 24. But first, Kathy.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, attendees, and of course, our public audience. My name is Kathy Nykel. I'm here from Main Street Oceanside, Downtown Business Association. I wanted to first extend my thanks to the city and our community for our support for our markets, and that's why I'm here today. For those of you who don't know it, the city started the Oceanside Farmers Market 30 years ago.
Yes.
And turned it over to Main Street Oceanside when we were just a baby, and now we're 30 years old with the Farmers Market. Mark is still running that market, so that's fantastic. And then also this month is our Sunset Market 15-year anniversary, so I wanted to bring up a couple promotions that we're doing. The first one is tomorrow, we're celebrating our 30-year anniversary for the Oceanside Farmers Market, and we're providing a market reusable tote bag with a few items in it, and the 30th person or so will be getting a nice little bundle of goodies tomorrow directly from vendors who are at our Oceanside Farmers Market. And then on the, what's next week, 18th, we will have our 15-year anniversary at the Sunset Market, again, handing out totes. We want to, we're working in conjunction with our sponsor, Energy Upgrade, about how you can save money on your energy and how to work smarter concerning energy. And then we'll be giving away 50 Sunset Market bucks, so basically, the market's on us that night on the 18th. So again, thank you for all your support for our anniversary this month, and we hope to see you at the markets and in the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, back to the general items. Item number 24 is approval of revised bylaws for the Police and Fire Commission and adoption of a resolution establishing a standing oversight committee. We have a report by Chief Fred Armijo.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. So tonight I'll be presenting on revised bylaws for the Police and Fire Commission. Staff is recommending that the city council approve these revisions of the bylaws, as well as adopting a resolution to establish a standing oversight committee. So a little bit of history, Police and Fire Commission dates back to May 8 of 1992. The current version of the bylaws were approved back in December of 2020. And then at a regular meeting in March of this year, the Police and Fire Commission voted 6-1 in favor of several revisions to the bylaws. Portions of the bylaws relative to a standing oversight committee were tabled to a special session that was held in April of this year, and during that meeting, the commission voted 5-2 in favor of the standing oversight committee, as well as standard operating procedures for both the police and fire departments oversight. So the revisions can be categorized into three areas: grammatical and minor updates, issues surrounding vacancies, as well as oversight, and my presentation is going to focus on vacancies and oversight. So the commission voted 6-1 in favor of new members being assigned as alternates instead of going directly into a regular voting status. This came as a result of existing alternates having been passed over for regular voting status. The commission was advised that such a change would not be possible without a city council policy change as well. After that special session, I did a little bit of research and looked at the makeup of all of the various advisory committees and commissions for the city, and 11 of the 17 of those bodies have all voting member seats and no alternates. So as a way to address this particular issue, staff is recommending that instead of having seven regular voting members and two alternates, that we eliminate the alternate designation and have nine regular voting members. Oversight, in 2021, the Police and Fire Commission's bylaws ad hoc committee began considering oversight as an additional responsibility, and in March and April of this year, the creation of a standing oversight committee and standard operating procedures for the oversight of police and fire departments were proposed and discussed during regular and special session meetings of the commission. Under the proposal, the role of the standing oversight committee would be to review and make recommendations regarding complaints of misconduct against members of the police and fire departments that were brought forward by members of the public. And the standard operating procedures are included as annexes to the bylaws. Annex A deals with police department, and Annex B deals with fire department. Essentially, on completion of a misconduct complaint investigation, the standing oversight committee members would be provided access to the entire investigative file to include audio and video recordings. Personal identifying information for all parties involved would be redacted, and that's the limit of any redaction. Then after completing the review, the standing oversight committee will render a disposition of either agree or disagree. If the decision is agree, that just means that the committee concurs that the findings of the investigation were appropriate and that the investigation itself was thorough, complete, and impartial, and obviously, a disagree means just that, they don't feel that it met that criteria. Now, for the fire department, the committee has the third option of a disposition of incomplete, and if they review a matter and feel that there's any portion of that investigation that merits further work, then it gets sent back for that work to be done, and then comes back to the standing oversight committee for a decision on whether they agree or disagree. Now, when the annexes were being discussed, the focus and attention was on Annex A for the police department, which it originally had that third option of incomplete, and I believe it was just a simple oversight that as the Annex A for the police department was being discussed and the elimination of that third option did take place, that it just didn't consider going back and getting it cleaned up for the fire department annex, so that explains the difference between the two. On a bimonthly basis, the standing oversight committee will provide a case summary for each of the cases that they review during a regular open session of the Police and Fire Commission. Staff is proposing that after one year of work, that we conduct an analysis to determine whether or not additional funding to manage the program is necessary, and if so, will return to council for a funding request. I don't believe any funding is necessary right now to kick this program off. So again, staff is recommending that the city council approve the revisions to the Police and Fire Commission bylaws and adopt a resolution to establish standing oversight committee. I'm available for questions, and we do have members of the Police and Fire Commission to include the members that were on the bylaws ad hoc committee here as well.
Thank you, Chief. How many speakers do we have on this item?
We have five speakers.
Okay, can we start, please?
Our first speaker is Judah Coker, to be followed by Larry Warner, to be followed by Tony Martinez.
Hello, Oceanside City Councilmembers and Mayor Sanchez. My name is Judah Coker, and I'm a resident of District 3 in Oceanside, as well as a community organizer for the nonprofit San Diego Organizing Project, SDOP for short, which formed the group that will be speaking today. Unfortunately, many of our members could not attend the meeting today but are either watching on Zoom or have submitted an e-comment on this item ahead of time. This group is here today to speak because we believe deeply in the need for every police department to have third-party oversight, and the fact that Oceanside is moving in this direction is very exciting. However, our continued research over the last few months, or through this research over the last few months, we've looked into national best practices and other local examples, and we've ultimately determined that there are conditions of oversight that are essential in order to ensure that a civilian run board operates in a way that actually delivers true transparency and accountability. We believe that this oversight board must be large enough and have membership that is made up of people with diverse backgrounds and experiences so as to be truly representative of the community. Additionally, we have seen from examples all across the country that these oversight boards are not effective unless given real power to conduct independent investigations and hold officers accountable. We are calling on the city to follow the example of San Diego Sheriff's Citizen Law Enforcement Review Board and recent reforms to the San Diego City Oversight Board, as well as La Mesa's Oversight Board, that, under certain conditions, gives them access to a third-party investigator, so they do not need to rely on the department's own internal investigation system. We also cannot accept a system in which OPD is able to ignore the review board's recommendations for action if they are different from the department's, as is currently being proposed under the bylaws. For this reason, we ask that you please reconsider the approval of the bylaws until these concerns are taken into account. these concerns are taken into account, and be willing to work with us and meet with us as community to explore ways to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Warner, to be followed by Tony Martinez.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Larry Warner. I'm a resident of Oceanside. Someone asked me what I would want the City of Oceanside to do in terms of public and police interaction. My answer would be the establishment of a public oversight committee. So I commend and applaud our mayor and the police chief to take these steps to bring this into, or make this a reality. However, as I look at the Annex A, there are a couple concerns I have. The current recommendation is that the committee is comprised of members of the Police and Fire Commission. But what is needed is that the committee be made of community members with various and diverse backgrounds. This is huge in terms of public receptive, perspective. Also, the Oceanside Oversight Board, I mean, must have access to all complaints that come to the department, not only selected ones, namely alleged misconduct complaints. Complaints can be categorized as procedural, in terms of policy as well, and that enables them to sidestep what is actually happening. This was actually done over and over and over again for years by LA County Sheriff's Departments, misconstruing what a complaint was so that wouldn't be investigated by the internal review boards. And finally, and the chief mentioned this one, in the dispositions, it has agree and disagree. And here's what it says, it's number 302, under disagree. When the committee's conclusion is disagree, the SOC will issue a report to the Police Department detailing its conclusion, period. For the first year, the rolling log of conclusions will be presented annually to the full commission and updated on the commission website. So it's currently written, if the standard oversight committee disagrees with the findings of the OPD's investigation of a complaint, the matter ends there. There's no further investigative action required by OPD or anyone else relative to disagreement is merely noted. If the goal of the mayor, police chief, and this council is accountability, I urge the City Council to not approve Annex A at this time, but continue to work on the proposal so that what is eventually approved can be seen as a positive step toward accountability and build trust within our great community of Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Martinez, to be followed by Karen S. Glover, to be followed by Katie Taylor.
Mayor Sanchez and City Council members, my name is Tony Martinez. I went to theology school four years ago. I graduated two years ago trying to become a missionary for my church overseas. My goal is to serve and protect my community. I have a background in caregiving. I considered becoming a nurse, but for reasons different than mine, I decided not to do that. One of the goals as a caregiver is to make sure that all of the residents assigned to you are safe, and also that there's no instances for them to have any potential for injury. In those cases, when an elderly adult is injured, we have an asset, a recourse available to us, and that is an ombudsman. That is an impartial body and entity that comes into a facility and assesses the merits of the case, what happened, and who was involved. What we're asking for, as my two peers explained to us, is very similar to that model. We're asking you to reconsider what has been proposed to the City Council. We're asking you, in my case, I'm asking you to consider the model of the ombudsman as an arbiter, an authority who has subpoena powers, and who can review all cases that are submitted to it by any of the residents at a facility. The issue of the ombudsman is not being a punitive agency, that's not the goal of it. The goal of it is to make sure that all of the cases are reviewed carefully and impartially into the best capacity that the law can provide. In this case, we're talking about lives, much in the same way that we're talking about lives when we see the city, police, and fire departments involved. So my request to you is to reconsider the proposal that has been submitted to you regarding the standing oversight committee. And as the chief was able to remind us, there were two dissenting voices at the prior vote. Commissioners Figueroa and Howard also sided with the idea that this is not what's best for our community. So I would ask you to look at those comments also, consider those voices, as well as voices like mine, and take another step and look at what's being proposed to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Karen S. Glover, to be followed by Katie Taylor.
Mayor Sanchez, council members, chief, and our new city manager. I'm a researcher. I study the police. I study accountability issues with the police and community relations with law enforcement. And as part of that position, I'm also a teacher. And I'm gonna just throw a scenario out for you. If I have my students, and particularly students of color, students from our working-class neighborhoods of Oceanside, and I just said to them, which one of these two options is going to increase the trust, increase the love, enhance the relationship between law enforcement and Oceanside and your community with your experience? And if I told them one option was to take a group of folks that's been on a longstanding committee, that has a very positive, apparently very positive, tight, good relationship with the Police Department and the city, it's a years-long, well-established relationship, and have them review any misconduct or transgressions with the police, or have an independent body made of people who look like you, who are from your communities, and have your experiences, and they have this group that's an independent body, actually has power, and doesn't have this perhaps conflict of interest? Which one, students, would you choose to enhance trust, the relationship, the love that we all want with our police and community? And I think the answer would be pretty obvious to my students. They're smart. They're brilliant. They're from our community. Thank you.
I'd like to also thank the Police and Fire Commission for hearing us out when we went to the meetings, being respectful, showing real openness with hearing what we had to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Katie Taylor.
Is this screen on if I put something down?
It will be now.
Oh, thanks. I am 1,000% opposed to forming this oversight committee. It is a terrible, terrible mistake. And a recent experience with a homeless situation on the corner of Villa Las Rosas and El Comino Real will demonstrate just one impact that something like this could have. Friends of mine have started a charter school right across the street from where you see these hoarder cars. There's three of them, two vans and one car stacked up, all owned by the same person. Of course, disgusting, they were there the day of their grand opening, and parents were questioning about the homeless issue. I called, of course, non-emergency dispatch. They said, oh, we know about those cars. I said, you do, then what are you doing about it? Well, nothing, they can be there, that's his home. I said, one man owns all three. And she said, we know, but we can't make a move for 72 hours. I said, you mean, one person can own three hoarder vehicles stuffed with crap inside and on the roof and all over? You can see the pictures, and there's nothing you can do? Are they licensed? Are they smogged? Are they registered? And when you start getting police oversight, this is the kind of stuff they're gonna back on, because the dispatcher, when I talked to her on the phone, she said, well, there's, you know, we have to go with California law. They're gonna take no risk. Everything you're doing with the police right now, you're just slapping more handcuffs. And when crime happens, and when people want something done, they're gonna say, oop, we've got this oversight committee, if we say something wrong to a homeless person or somebody with a hoarder car, there goes a complaint against us, not against the homeless people, not against the people destroying our neighborhoods, it'll come back to the police. So I would think the city attorney, there should be some code we can develop that one person can't own three vehicles like that and park it on one of our public streets. When I asked the question, what can this person have for? Can they have 10? You know what the answer was? Yes. Yes. That is so unacceptable, my head exploded. And so I just want to tell everybody here, you think you want a police oversight committee? Wait until they start backing off. Wait until they won't take any more risk. Wait until you hear the comment on the line, well, we have to go with what California says. Once again, I recommend you call Gavin Newsom at 916-415-2841 before we lose Oceanside to the way we've lost San Diego, LA, and San Francisco.
Thank you.
And that concludes the speakers.
Thank you. To the council, oh, wait, any issues that you wanted to address, chief, that were brought up?
I don't think there's issues for me to address. There's certainly varying opinions on this topic. What you see before you today was the culmination of work on the part of the ad hoc committee over, well over a year. I'm not sure if any members of the ad hoc committee are able to or would like to add anything to this discussion, but they are here.
Thank you very much. To the council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you for all the members of the public that came and expressed their concerns and opinions on this topic. Oceanside is a very unique community, and since my tenure and my experience, being here for a little over 20 years, my experience and feedback I've received about Oceanside police officers has always been phenomenal. I think we have a unique police force managed by our own. You know, our own chief has been a longtime resident here in the City of Oceanside. But I also agree that accountability is important. And when we sit up here to make policy and direct staff to move on directives, we have to make sure that that policy is based on empirical data and fact, and not what-ifs, especially if those what-ifs are happening in jurisdictions hundreds, if not thousands of miles away. We cannot make policies in Oceanside that don't fit Oceanside, but are better used in cities like Chicago or San Francisco. I think this is a great first step. My concern is, you know, what burden this would bring to our city from a monetary perspective? You know, staff time and energy is gonna have to be a part of this. I didn't see any line items on what that cost would look like. I would like to see that. Again, you can't, you know, there's no amount of money you could pay to have, you know, the community trust our police officers, but I have yet to experience one constituent come to me about an issue with a police officer that wasn't addressed. Not one. And so we're creating this, and I appreciate it, and I respect the experience on the commission that we have. We have former retired police officers, they understand the game, that sit on that commission. I respect their opinion, and they voted in support of this recommendation. I think it's a great step forward that I fully support. And if there happens to be issues or dynamics that happen that are not being attained, or, you know, staff is not working with you, all it takes is one email to a council member. Because I know when I receive an email, if it has anything to do with the police officer or misconduct, that's a top priority for me, and I have yet to receive one. So I support staff's recommendation. I support the recommendations of this commission as a first step, and I look forward to seeing what this evolves into. The goal here is transparency, accountability, and public trust, and I support this. And I thank our Police Department and our commission, who works very hard and has been serving for many years, for putting this together.
Councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, I have a question, chief. So the items that will be coming before the standing committee, I presume, have the potential of leading to central disciplinary action against an employee. So will this committee be issuing their finding prior to the imposition of discipline?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, there are lights.
I will make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second, but would that include the recommendation from the chief to convert all the commissioners to regular?
Yes.
I'll second.
Thank you. My comments. In 2019, our community had some very, very difficult times. Our country had some very, very difficult times. We had a pandemic that we didn't understand, and never thought that we would have some, we thought that that was something from the Middle Ages or something, right? Something, a pandemic that could kill people. And in the midst of this, there were some issues in other cities with respect to community police relations. That included African-Americans on TV being shown as... Very difficult for me, because I'm sure you saw some of those scenes, where people who were to be trusted in the community actually, and have been convicted of homicide during a stop, of an African-American, usually male. How this impacted Oceanside, and Oceanside is a community that I feel is one that, when we talk, when we're at the table and talking, we're able to resolve issues. I was raised in one of the barrios in Oceanside that has suffered some of these issues. There are several of them in Oceanside. And have I heard of issues of concern and feelings of harassment by police, by residents, usually a person of color? Yes. Is there something that, have we improved that? Yes. However, there continue to be some level, either perceived or actual. When I first got on the council, I asked, one of the first things I asked, because I'd see some of the officers throwing some of the kids, Latino kids, against the wall. Who do you claim? There was a big issue with gangs during that time. And what I wanted was better community police relations. I wanted after-school programming to address some of these things, some positive ways of addressing and moving forward for our Police Department, as well as our community, especially our youth, especially youth of color. I want to say that I believe we did a lot. We increased the salaries, increased requirements, and went into the community police model. And I believe with Kick It With A Cop, the soccer, that where we had the kids playing with the officers, playing basketball with the officers, flag football with the officers, and really taking it down to the point where our Latino men were talking to the officers in a very, very direct way, that we actually formed some trust. We are, because of our success, our ratio with the community and our police, and especially with what has happened nationwide, we have lost a lot of officers. We have a lot of vacancies. And so our community policing program has suffered. And I don't know if that's why we have had some of the issues that we've had, but I believe that this is a step toward bringing that trust back. Does it go far enough for some of the community members? No, it doesn't. But is this a start? Yes, I do believe it is. When I first became the mayor, when I got elected, I went to the Police and Fire Commission and asked for their help. I said, listen, people are asking for something like this, this, some kind of review. We need to have, in order to have something... We need to have, in order to have something like that to be successful, we need to have representation, we need to have representation from communities, community members from these impacted neighborhoods, so that we can have that dialogue, and probably for the first time ever. Because if you ever went to a Police and Fire Commission meeting, not very many people from the public will come to, you know, will come and listen or come and speak or share an issue in their neighborhood. It just wasn't happening. So how do we do this? How do we start this dialogue? And I asked for their help. I said, we need to have, we need to be able to get representation on this commission, and I need your help in getting us there. Either expand the commission, help me find out how we can get people from our Latino neighborhoods, from our African-American neighborhoods, on this commission to have that meaningful dialogue. So I appointed two people, and I said I wanted to appoint two people. We had one African-American on the Police and Fire Commission, it was Gwen Sanders, and she was stepping down after many years. I want to say it was 16 years, maybe even longer. We needed to have representation from the African-American community, and I asked Rob Howard if he would please consider stepping away from the Measure X Committee and take on this role, which I knew was going to be, you know, for the first time, we were going to have that kind of dialogue. And then I also asked Jimmy Figueroa, who is someone who grew up in District 3, the tri-city area, and had a lot of the issues that some of our youth are still having, and yet he was able to go from a kid who dropped out of high school to having gone to law school, graduated from law school, and now is executive director for Project Hope, went through Vista Community Clinic as a leader, even had suffered through some of the shootings, some of the kids being killed in the Latino community in the Backseat area, so with Mesa Margarita area. So we have these two people out of the entire nine, and how, and somebody brought up, how do we get more representation? Well, that is something that is not addressed here, that hopefully will continue to be something that I will ask, that I ask the Police and Fire Commission to consider. How do we get more diversity on a commission? We don't have term limits, we don't have, you know, some people serve for many years, and these are great, super volunteers, but how do we get a turnover? Very difficult. So these are issues that I hope that the commission will continue to look at, because we do need to achieve that in order to be able to have meaningful discussions. I do invite, these are baby steps, I see this as baby steps. It may be that we come up with suggestions and recommendations that will come before the council in terms of changes, that might get us to the point where this is it, this is a dialogue that, this allows for that kind of dialogue, this allows for people to feel comfortable in coming in, and that's, in other words, having a trust level to say, yes, I'm going to come forward. Because I bet you, I mean, most people don't want to come forward, you know, most people will share these stories and then, well, why don't you file a complaint? No, they're not going to do anything about this, you know. I know how much I have. Thank you. One minute, 13 seconds. So I went to the commission, thank you so much for listening to me, I met with the chair, thank you so much for meeting with me, then-chair, asking for this. And I see that this is what we have, they have produced. I appreciate staff's recommendation, I'm going to support this, but I really, you know, as a baby step in getting there, but I really want to try to get forward in another, in a meaningful way to what the community would feel in terms of trust, in terms of building that trust, in terms of building those bonds. Thank you very much. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Let's get to our 6 o'clock items. Let's start with item 26, which is introduction of an ordinance amending Article 30, Section 3032, entitled Affordable Housing Density Bonus of the zoning ordinance to establish, revise AHDB regulations conforming to the provisions of Government Code Section 65915 as amended through various Senate and Assembly bills adopted between 2019 and 2021. Adoption of a resolution establishing the amended text of Article 30, Section 3032 as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from our council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
Staff.
Staff and some public.
Staff.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
Any correspondence that we received on this item was forwarded to council prior to the meeting, and I don't see any correspondence on this item.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin with Delaney Carmen, planning, planner from the city of Oceanside.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Delaney Carmen with the Planning Division, and I'm here to present the Affordable Housing Density Bonus update. The request includes a zone amendment to Article 30 of the zoning ordinance and a local coastal program amendment to incorporate revisions to the Affordable Housing Density Bonus ordinance and fully implement all provisions as prescribed by state law. To provide a bit of background, our Affordable Housing Density Bonus ordinance was last updated in 2019 and included a series of changes from state density bonus law that passed between 2014 and 2018. Since then, a number of new bills have passed in regards to density bonus, including clarifications and new provisions. Furthermore, on January 26, 2022, council directed staff to add provision to our local ordinance prohibiting short-term rentals on all units proposed as a part of density bonus Therefore, staff is proposing to update the Affordable Housing Density Bonus ordinance for the purposes of adding clarifying language and technical edits for better implementation of the ordinance, fully implementing the new state density bonus law provisions as mandated by state law, and including council-directed language regarding short-term rentals. A comprehensive list of each legislative update and their associated bills is included in the staff report for council's reference. Some of the key revisions to state density bonus law include a new density bonus option for 100% affordable developments, specifically projects that propose 100% of their units as affordable can receive up to an 80% density bonus increase or unlimited density if the project is located within a half mile of major transit, reduced parking ratios for all developments, an increase in the maximum amount of density bonus allowed up to 50% for all projects, previously the maximum amount of density bonus allowed for any project was capped at 35%, and an expansion of the list of projects that qualify for reduced parking within a half mile of transit. Staff is also proposing a number of additional revisions to our local ordinance for cleanup and clarification purposes, which are as follows. References to commercial development partnership provisions have been removed as a part of a sunset clause set forth in AD 1934. We've clarified language regarding parking and land donation provisions for consistency with state law. And finally, staff has added language to prohibit all units proposed as a part of density bonus projects from being rented for a period of less than 31 days, which is pursuant to council direction. The zoning text amendments are intended to update the city's Affordable Housing Density Bonus ordinance as mandated by state law. The proposed revisions will remove ambiguities and provide consistency with state density bonus provisions. Prohibition of short-term rentals will ensure that future developments are utilizing state density bonus law with the original intent of providing affordable housing. Furthermore, Planning Commission voted 5-0 to recommend the city council adopt the revised Affordable Housing Density Bonus ordinance as proposed. Therefore, staff recommends that council introduce an ordinance amending Article 30, Section 3032 of the zoning ordinance, and adopt the resolution establishing the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program to incorporate revisions to the Affordable Housing Density Bonus ordinance and fully implement all provisions as prescribed by state law. This concludes staff's presentation, and we will be available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. This is a time for you, for the public, to comment on this item, specifically on this item. Please provide your name, and you'll have up to three minutes. Do we have any requests?
We don't have any advance or requests on this item.
So, Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127, Sherri Lane. In light of the reduced parking and other reductions into personal vehicular options, I would like to have a request that the individuals that live in this area have as a requirement of living into this area, a qualification of having as part of living into that area is having a transit pass to take in order to live in it. This way, there is an accountability for taking this option of having into this area of having without a car, because what's happening is, is that you'll take and have the people there, they, you know, have in the reduction of the vehiculars option, but yet people will have their car, and it may impact surrounding community. So if they're mandated to have a qualification of having to have a transit pass, this will make sure that having the transit pass, they'll use it, because what happens is, if it comes out of their pocket, well, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and use it. So I throw that out as an idea in the trash heap of ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please provide your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Okay.
I'm Sandra Martinez, and I just had a question based upon what was said here. With future plans in the state of California, basically to eliminate gas vehicles by 2030 or 2040, I'm not sure which is the true plan, since there are a lot of them out there, how will people that have vehicles charge their vehicles if they cannot park near their residence? It just seems to me this is something that needs to be incorporated in plans if we're going to be limiting parking, which obviously is needed when you're doing high density. So how will people be able to charge their vehicles in this kind of a situation? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I believe staff is taking note of that and will be responding to your question. Anyone else wishing to speak to address this item? I see no one standing. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and ask staff to respond to any questions that were raised. I guess the last one.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the city council, with respect to a transit pass requirement, I'm not sure that the city could actually require that, it'd be a little inequitable, not everyone has the luxury of taking transits. With respect to EV charging, so the building code has a minimum requirement which supersedes any provisions of density bonus, that a project with a certain amount of parking spaces has to provide a percentage of those for EV vehicles, and then a percentage of those have to have actual charging stations. And so the city also has a municipal code requirement for EV charging, and so those would be addressed through those two documents and regulatory framework. If a project were to have zero parking, I'm not sure that would actually be a viable project in the marketplace, because the market demands a certain amount of parking be provided at a certain level. We have not seen a request for a project with zero parking, so we're not, we haven't encountered that obstacle yet.
Thank you, and I know we just had some charging stations at La Senia Park by, was it SDGNE? Right? Do you know if there are other plans for that to happen in public places?
Mayor Sanchez, the EV vehicle charging infrastructure is expanding every day. We often get requests for additional EV charging at shopping centers and other public places, so it is growing. There is still a lack of infrastructure, that's one of the limitations of EV vehicles expanding at a faster rate.
Okay, thank you. All right, to the council, Councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, I have a question. So currently, it's, for a density bonus project, it's half a space per unit. Is that number dropping?
There's, Councilmember Weiss, there's a sliding scenario on what parking is required based on its location, proximity to transit type of project. The base standard is one space per unit, it could go down to as little as half a space per unit. In some instances, it could be zero spaces. It really depends on the projects, there's so many different scenarios, it's hard to answer the question with one.
What is the longest extension cord someone could buy at Home Depot? You don't have to answer that. So I'm presuming most of these changes are driven by state requirements, that we really don't have much of a choice as it relates to, Mr. Mullen?
Is there a question? So in terms of, I was going to mention that there is one that is policy-driven by the council, which is the prohibition on short-term rentals for density bonus. That's not a state law, that is previous policy direction for the council that you asked us to incorporate in a future amendment, so it's being addressed in here. The rest of them are almost verbatim state law changes that are imported into our density bonus ordinance.
A move approval staff recommendation.
Deputy Mayor Khan?
As I've spoken about many times, when projects come before us, the state density bonus law is a disaster, and it continues to be that way, as many things are out of Sacramento. And so, again, with these questions, where are they going to charge our EV cars, or even if it's close to transit, you're going to have a car anyway, that's all correct. And those were things that we think of that frustrate us when these mandates come down, and we're trying to manage a city, and we get these mandates. And there's all these unintended consequences that the legislators in Sacramento don't think of in their rush to make perfect California. So it's very frustrating. One thing I'm happy about is the short-term rental, no short-term rentals, and density bonus, density bonus was created to create more housing, not rentals, so if they're going to use that law that we don't have any discretion over, then it shouldn't be used for short-term rentals. So again, I am reluctantly approve, or a second approval for staff's recommendation, but this is not a City of Oceanside-driven program for density bonus, just to make that clear.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. I echo everything my colleagues have brought forward. I'm a strong supporter of private property rights, but I agree with my colleagues, and moving on policy that limits a developer who applies for density bonuses with multiple variances and, you know, benefits to therefore turn that benefit into a vacation rental, I think that would move our city in the wrong direction, and so I'm in full support of this item tonight.
Councilmember Johnson?
I have a question regarding the vacation rentals, and some of these projects have market rate units, so would that restriction apply to all the units in a project, or just the restricted units?
The policy direction from council previously was all of the units, and so that's what's before you.
Okay.
And we've been conditioning projects, the city has been, as they've come through, even before the adoption of this ordinance.
Thank you. I have a question. I know that we have been asking staff to come up with recommendations on how we can address, you know, what latitude do we have in addressing some of these things, either the density bonus or SB 9? And I have not heard back. I was hoping we'd have some kind of workshop so that staff can share with this with us, and also share it with the community, and I believe recently Carlsbad addressed some of these, and actually, what I read, because I, this was a paper, I did not actually go to read the staff report, Carlsbad, but it sounded like Carlsbad was interpreting their local coastal plan as being first and as a state mandate, basically, once you, once you adopt your LCP, your local coastal plan, and they were doing that as a priority and everything would have to comply with the LCP, at least in that area. LCP, at least in that area. Did we study Carlsbad's and have we come up with some recommendations on how we can address some of these issues?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and council members, to answer your question, yes, we have actually been tracking what's been going on in other cities. You may recall, this topic has come up before and certainly there is some limited discretion that cities have with respect to coming up with some local standards, but of course, by and large, state law still trumps those standards. But there is some limited discretion. We have been tracking what other cities have been doing. We did kind of want to see what other cities were doing in terms of how much success they had. We have actually discussed what Carlsbad has recently been working on and we do intend to bring back some standards back to city council for its consideration. I would expect that we could bring those back for consideration by the end of this year.
Wouldn't it be better to look at, see what we can do before adopting, before moving on item 26?
Well, I think that standards that are in item 26, we don't have any discretion over. At the end of the day, these are all essentially reflective of state law. I don't believe that by adopting this item tonight would preclude us from taking further steps to come with other standards down the road. So I would recommend that we continue to move forward with this particular item.
Even with respect to our LCP?
I don't necessarily agree that the LCP would preempt. I guess the LCP would give us necessarily much coverage at the end of the day. There is state legislation that speaks to that very issue. And I guess to answer your question shortly, no, I don't necessarily think by adopting the action this evening that we're jeopardizing our ability to come up with other standards down the road.
Why, are you aware of what Carlsbad did with respect to prioritizing the LCP over the density bonus and SB 9?
Yes, but there is state law that actually doesn't necessarily give full preemption of the LCP over state density bonus law.
But there are some considerations or?
There are some considerations, but at the end of the day, I'm not sure whether or not they are as effective as one might think.
I think the statute speaks of harmonizing the density bonus laws with the coastal act and the LCP. But I think your SB 9 is distinct from the state density bonus law.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I throw one option out there? And there is one important item I think that staff collectively believes is necessary to address density bonus and it's item 27, which we pulled, but which is coming back quickly because, you know, when you lifted the density cap in the downtown district, it was on the assumption that you could implement form-based zoning and, you know, where you would have height, FAR, other requirements that would regulate the size and look and feel of the buildings. But with the adoption of amendments to the density bonus law, that has been deteriorated. So we think it's important to reimpose a density cap downtown. We've had some pushback a little bit, but we will be coming back to you with that.
Is that at the next council meeting?
I'll have to defer to the management on that, but it's going to be soon.
Yeah, I don't think it'll come up at the next council meeting, but most likely the meeting after that.
Right. Well, I know that, for example, the LCP is based on incorporating visitor serving to, like the beach area and the LCPs and therefore assumes that we will have enough parking. I mean, that's why we had, why the city has always had all this beach parking. And so I'm just wondering if there's a way of ensuring that we don't lose our beach parking because we end up having people parking there because there's no parking in their residence or near their residence. So that would be my concern is that, is there any way that we can use our LCP, for example, and, you know, in this issue of parking, to do a little bit of pushback and require appropriate parking?
Yeah, so what I would suggest is we can go ahead and prepare a memo and essentially provide an analysis of that question and we can provide analysis of the actions that Carlsbad recently took as well. One thing to consider and it's another discussion point that we've had is even when we do come up with standards, even if there are more restrictive standards that we come up with, under state density bonus law, the developer still has a right to request a waiver of those standards at the end of the day. So it is kind of a catch 22 situation, unfortunately.
Can I just throw one other thing in there? There was a 2016 Court of Appeal opinion called Canal Gardens, which found that the state, the coastal act is subordinate to the, I'm sorry, that the opposite, that density bonus was subordinate to the coastal act and that was overturned by the state legislature in 2019. The amendment to the statute was expressly to overturn that Court of Appeal opinion. So there is language, as I spoke of earlier, that the two need to be harmonized. So we could continue to look at other jurisdictions and how they've addressed that.
So do we know why then Carlsbad is talking about the LCP as ensuring that the LCP is, you know, is overriding policy?
I don't, but I could be happy to look into it and it, you know, the statute though, I've looked at this before and the statute's very clear, it was adopted with the intent of overturning that appellate court decision.
Okay. Yeah, I'm asking all these questions because part of this action is to adopt the resolution that would be part of the implementing documents for the, for our LCP program. So that's, my concern is if we do this, can we go back if we can find some ways of addressing this through our LCP? And you're saying, yes, we can. Is that, Mr. Verago, yes, we can?
Yeah, I'll defer to the city attorney on this, but I don't believe that by taking the action tonight that we would be precluding ourselves from making changes down the road that were consistent with state law.
I agree with that.
Council member Rodriguez?
Part of our annual legislative platform that we hire consultants for is to advocate on a state level for policies. And I believe one of those policies is to enhance more local control. And so I get the mayor's questions of looking for loopholes on ways to circumvent and create more local control from these sort of policy decisions, but in the end, you know, I think our staff is, you know, wants to continue to prioritize local control whenever we can, subject to state law and case precedents. So I fully support moving forward on this. I'd like to make a motion for approval.
There's already a motion in a second on the, there's already a motion in a second, right? I believe, I believe, yeah. Okay, no other lights. I wish I had taken the time to read what Carlsbad did and I apologize for, you know, I thought that we were, had already looked at Carlsbad and, excuse me, that my question could, to staff at this hearing could, kind of make me feel better about our LCP. So I have some trepidation about voting because I'm concerned about, you know, what, voting to support because we do have a good LCP. So, but let's go ahead and vote.
Sanchez abstaining.
Thank you. Item number 28, which is approval of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 Annual Action Plan of the Consolidated Plan for Housing and Community Development for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Authorization for the city manager to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. On the prior item, I neglected to stop you. I needed to title that ordinance.
Oh, that's right.
Prior to the formal vote, so rather than create any problems, could we go ahead and go back to that?
Redo that. Okay, please title the ordinance. Mr. Mullen?
Just one second, I've already moved on in my book as well, so that was 26, Mayor, or 24?
It was 26, yes.
Okay, if we could redo this, this is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council, the City of Oceanside, amending Article 30, Section 3032 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to Establish Revised Affordable Housing Density Bonus Regulations Conforming to the Provisions of the Government Code, Section 65915.
Thank you and we're going to vote again on this item, so please vote.
Motion approved 4-0. Sanchez abstaining.
Thank you. And we are now on item number 28, which is, see, authorization, I want to continue with the title, authorization for the description, authorization for the city manager to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for funds under the Community Development Block Grant and home investment partnership programs. Authorization for the city manager to sign and execute required forms and documents for the grant funds and authorization for the neighborhood services director to sign agreements with sub recipients. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from my council member colleagues regarding their constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff?
Staff reports?
Staff.
Staff.
Mr. Navarro, any correspondence and/or petitions?
The city clerk's office has not received any correspondence on this item.
Thank you. We're going to have a report by Cecilia Barandiaran, Management Analyst.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and council members. I'm here tonight to present the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. We are here to approve submission of the plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, and authorize the city manager and neighborhood services director to sign all appropriate paperwork. The Annual Action Plan was approved by the Housing Commission at the February 22nd meeting and once again at the July 28th meeting. We were prepared to take the plan to city council at the May meeting, but pulled the item since HUD staff requested that we delay in submitting the plan until we had approved HUD agreements, appropriations. Our CDBG funds have decreased by $88,307 and our home funds have increased by $26,350. Staff prepared a new public hearing notice that identified these changes in funding and the public comment period was extended through July. We have not received any public comments to date. The primary objective of the CDBG program is the development of viable urban communities through decent housing, suitable living environment and through expanded economic development opportunities for low mod income persons. Activities funded under this program must address one of three national objectives while home is simply to create and retain affordable housing. The Annual Action Plan serves as the formal funding application and is generally submitted by May 15th of each year. The federal statute deadline to submit is August 15th, which is right around the corner. Entitlement figures are based on HUD appropriations. Initially, we anticipated a budget similar to this year's, but our CDBG allocation, again, reflects a decrease of $88,307 and the home budget reflects that increase of $26,350. Our CDBG and home program income consists of repaid loans and residual receipts. All public services for CDBG were reduced by approximately 3.55% and that is reflected in your exhibits B and C, or your exhibit B. The 15% public service cap is currently closed to new sub recipients, sorry, that one's troubling for me, with council direction to fund youth and senior programs run through city resource centers and recreation facilities. The reduction in CDBG funds was applied to all public services, both internal and external. The 20% administration cap includes housing program development, fair housing and grants administration. Due to the 50% cap on public services, other local federal housing programs such as Section 8 and Measure X are used to address homeless prevention and homeless serving programs. We also have set aside funding for two capital projects. One is the Libby Lake Recreational Who's Ball System, Port, and combined, our capital projects have a combined allocation of over $1 million point two. The HUD Office of Inspector General issued an audit back in 2018 to HUD that found that cities in general were failing in California to ensure compliance with code enforcement. After various internal discussions, it was decided to phase out code enforcement as part of our 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan and increase CDBG funding for eligible CIP projects citywide. With that, the former code enforcement budget of $250 and any remaining unallocated has been added to our CIP contingency for future projects. Our home admin is again capped at 10%. That admin reflects our 10% allocation and 10% of the home program income for a total program income level of $86,580. Home and home ARP funds are currently dedicated to the Greenbrier Permanent Affordable Development. With tonight's public hearing, staff is prepared to accept any final public comments and all comments will be added and accepted to the plan. Upon the conclusion of this plan hearing, staff is prepared to submit the plan to HUD and I appreciate your time and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. This is the time for the public to address this issue. If you wish to speak on this very specific item, please approach the podium and you give your name and, you have up to three minutes. Do we have any requests to speak?
We don't have any advance requests on this item.
Okay, I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and go to the council. Council member Rodriguez?
Thank you for this presentation and now that we know the correct allocations, we can move forward on getting this submitted. My questions have to do with the housing programs, in particular, grants to very low-income mobile homeowners. I think all of us on this dais have a mobile home park, typically with Oceanside rent control and, you know, retirees, veterans and families. And I know when I first got elected, one of the things I noticed with some of these HUD and CDBG grants that if the money is not used, it's got to be sent back. Is that correct?
We are actually coming, planning on going forward to council and the Housing Commission on our mobile home improvement grant program. The mobile home improvement grant program provides up to $6,000 as a grant for very low-income households and up to $3,000 with a required matching $3,000 for very low households. $6,000 is really not becoming sufficient to address the imminent needs. So we're looking at kind of what would that be? And plus, we also have a waitlist of, I think from 2018 or 2019 that we're still pulling from.
Okay.
So it's a very challenging program in the sense of how much money is tied for it and how much you want to give out as a grant in terms of what's comfortable because it is public funds, so we have to be very considerate of what, how we're using those funds.
No, absolutely, because, so when I first got elected, I remember in 2018, there was, from the previous years, there was like only a couple, like one or two people that actually participated. And so I was trying to get the word out in my community and hopefully, so right now you're saying there's a waiting list for this program?
Correct, there is a waiting list.
Okay, good.
We have been processing more mobile home improvement grants and so we anticipate spending out all of our funds.
Okay, got it. If that's not the case, please send an email to all of us and we'll go racing to our neighborhoods and find somebody for you guys to apply.
We have plenty of people who come to us. We don't need the advertisement, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, we have had that program for a while. Thank you. No other lights, I'm going to go ahead and move, did you move approval?
I move approval.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion in a second? Please vote.
Motion approved 5-0.
Thank you. Back to item number 25 for the general items. That is approval of Amendment 1 to a Public Works Agreement with Denali Water Solutions LLC of San Bernardino in an amount not to exceed $5.1 million for a total contract amount of $7.4 million for biosolids handling and sludge hauling services, approval of an additional appropriation amount of $9,100 from the water and $544,013 from the sewer operating fund, unrestricted balances and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment. And we have a report by Rudy Guzman, Water Utilities Division Manager, I think.
He's done his part.
Okay. Hit it when you have to go to the bathroom when, you know, no, not really. Hate it when you have to go to the bathroom when, you know, no, not really. Hit it when you have to go to the bathroom when, you know, no, not really. Good evening.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, fellow council members. Sorry, I ran. Give me a second to catch my breath. So tonight I will be, oh, sorry, my name is Rudy Guzman. I'm one of the Water Utilities Division Manager, one of four. What I oversee are the four treatment plants, and I will be talking tonight about one of the byproducts of those treatment plants solids. And in particular, I'll be discussing an amendment to the current contract with Denali. So what we will be recommending is that council approve an amendment to that existing contract in an amount not to exceed $5,143,000 for a total contract amount not to exceed $7,425,000 to the Public Works Agreement with Denali Water Solutions to for bio solid hauling services. Additionally, we will be recommending approval of appropriation, the amount of $9,100 from the water fund and $544,023 from the sewer fund for this fiscal year, and then authorize the city manager to execute that amended agreement. So as a background, I mentioned that water treatment always has byproducts. We produce water, but we also produce solids that are separated from that water. Generally, they're called sludge, biosolage, grits, and rags, and in the future, potentially, we might have a food digestate product. And these biosolids, we try our best to try to recover or reuse them as best as possible. So most, by and large, most of our byproducts or our solids are used as fertilizer, but there are a small amount of grit and rags that must be sent to landfill. But all this requires hauling services. Historically, the city has spent about $850,000 every year for these services, and the agreement that we are trying to amend was signed or approved January 20 of last year, and it was for about two and a half years, so it was set to expire on June, or is set to expire on June 30 of next year. So why do we need to amend the current agreement? In May, Denali, who does the hauling services, reached out to the city and let us know that the current prices just were not sufficient for them to maintain services due to increased cost of operations and maintenance, fuel, and even labor associated with these services. So they proposed new prices or price increases. We did reach out to the original second proposer, Synagro, which also hauls biosolids, just to make sure that the price increase was, I don't want to say reusable, but at least competitive. But Synagro's prices were still higher than the increased prices that Denali was proposing. So we are recommending the approval of the amendment to keep Denali as our sludge hauling server services, because, one, they are lower cost overall, and, two, they're the only vendor or proposer that would not only haul solids or biosolids, but also grit and rags. This table outlines the appropriation, but we can see from that first sentence that what we're asking for is the amendment not to exceed $5,143,000, and that would bring the total contract to an amount not to exceed $7,425,500. The table below that, the first column there, you see the three plants that do produce sludge currently. The top two are the wastewater plants out of the sewer fund, and then that last one, WIS, is our water plant. The second column shows how much we, Denali, will charge us to haul for the fiscal year '23, and the next column is how much we had already appropriated for this fiscal year under the old contract. And so finally, that third appropriation column just shows how much we need to appropriate to meet the increased cost of hauling. So staff is recommending approval of the amendment, Amendment 1, in the amount not to exceed $5,143,000 for a total contract amount not to exceed $7,425,000 to the Public Works Agreement with Denali Water Solutions LLC of San Bernardino for biosolids handling and sludge hauling services, and approve an additional appropriation, the amount of $9,100 from the water operating fund and $544,023 from the sewer operating fund, and then authorize city manager to execute this agreement or this amended agreement. And I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Do we have any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. To the council, Deputy Mayor Keim.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second? Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Advanced written request to reserve time to speak. We have a request from Roche Satek. And this is on the city's influence, ability, capability to aid in building an infrastructure for sustained community growth with citizens of the community as primary population of empowerment. And Mr. Satek, you have up to five minutes.
So if I told you that I grew up in Oceanside, that the diversity and the culture and the many different people that roam and permeate of different cities, streets, and barrios, would you feel like you could see me? When you go downtown and you look at the buildings that are being built, or when you go down to the beach, or when you look at the Oceanside streets and the mainframes where everybody congregates, do you feel like you can see me? Because I've seen so much of Oceanside start taking away the people that make it up. I've seen Oceanside remove citizens' ability to breathe, to aspire, to see dreams. I've seen big buildings go up downtown to bring tourists, to bring money, to bring economy, but I haven't seen much grow for the community of Oceanside. I haven't seen many places for conversation, for culture, or just to break bread, or to say hi. I'm representing Soan in truth. My wife's dream is to create a space where creative souls have an arc to carry them, to show them the different ways and places that they can be, so that they can find that art might be for them. Maybe it's words, maybe it's just helping build a stronger community. In this place, this cultural community center, we're allowed to have dances that celebrate so many different people's backgrounds that we can all celebrate together. In this cultural community center, we have diversity panels that allow the members of the community to come up and speak, while officers come in and listen just respectfully as we sit and listen to them here. It allows for sports days, hiking, book clubs, cinematic appreciation. Our Creative Souls Arc Community Cultural Center is supposed to be, will be, is a place that not just helps the youth, who don't tend to have the access to many of the different things that are supposed to help them succeed later in life, it's also going to give them access to mentors that look like them, that speak like them, that come from the different communities and groups, labels applied, like them. So when they go to this place and they sit there and they decide that they want to feel safe, feel free, and find the different aspirations that drive their heart, beat their soul, all they have to do is open the door, because we've made America safe again. We've created a place where it doesn't matter who you are, what your beliefs are, what you look like, your ability, disability, or whatever else facilitations we try to apply in boxes and checks. You come here, you're safe to be, to breathe, to share, and the experiences that are life. Free Thought Revolution is the podcast that started conversations that need to be had, need to be held, in order to create a community that was understanding, empathetic, and humanist. We try to find a way to humanize all of us, and it's a wonderful nonprofit that sits and makes sure we speak to different people from different communities and allow them, not me, not you, not anybody else, them, to speak their truth, their support, their lived experiences. Soan in Truth is my personal thing, where I try to get up and give diversity consultation. I speak truths, I speak performances, and I give heart and soul, and I try to bring communion together. I've used my personal venture to try to help fund the private venture that's nonprofit to create a community that's bigger, because in capital world, capital pushes best. So my wife asked me to come out here and sit and do what I do best, which is share words, hopefully to bring everybody here together, because we have so much division that's sitting outside these doors, that when we walk outside, so many of us will pull into our phone, put our heads down, and just walk straight to our car, and we'll lose the hellos, the goodbyes, and the hey. It was a pleasure to sit in here and share space with you. So in the last 60 seconds that I have to sit up here and share my little bit of space with you, I'm not asking for your money, I'm not asking for much more of your time, I'm not even really asking for anything other than the hope that you see the same seeds in the youth that roam these streets of Oceanside, and you want to plant and nurture them with the same opportunities that so many other people get. We live in a world where we have a chance and opportunity, many times just one, to see somebody for more than the tattoos, piercings, melanated skin, or the funny way they walk. We have one opportunity so many times to simply just listen to the words that somebody's sharing. So I hope that you've taken the time to hear that what I'm sharing is a cultural community center for a lot of creative souls to have an arc to better themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Satek.
Be blessed.
Right, we're on Communications for the Public regarding items not on this agenda that were not advanced requests to speak. How many requests do we have?
We have eight requests to speak.
Okay, let's get started.
Our first speaker is Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Chad Phillips, to be followed by Mala Enger, and to be followed by Ken Leighton.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. Over the past couple months, especially this last month when everybody was on vacation, something I've been watching and listening to has occurred to me. In thinking about what took place about 25 years ago, when we broke up 20 people here in Oceanside, got together and looked at our water needs, we developed out of that different ideas that looked ahead to what we have now, and where we're able, in our Oceanside and also in San Diego County, to look ahead to where, when the state of California had the water crisis, it didn't affect us as much as it affected the rest of the state. But looking at it now, I'm very concerned, because we're going to have a choice between the limitation of growth versus future rationing mandates, and that has to do basically with carrying capacity of mainly the material, which is water, and the infrastructure that we have. And I say anything more than like me, in looking at the reserves in the Colorado Mountains and Basin, you look at all those, and then you take and look at what we have been given by the reports of our staff. They look at projects, like as an example, the surf thing that's going on out in the valley. Oh, we can take and have adequate sources. No, we can't. Looking ahead, this is just a pie in the sky, or just temporary, but in the long run, we will be at a deficit. We need to have a comprehensive needs assessment for citizen, home, and business, to see what the available supply is, and resources, and challenges. We need to look at the real life, continued environmental conditions, the continued drought. We need to look at what the use is, and looking at the less of the amount that we have with the demounting of the existing structures that we have going on. And we have to also look at what the sources are. This is something that we need to take a serious stand back and duck, otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
We have a problem.
Thank you.
We will have a problem.
Chad Phillips, to be followed by Mala Enger, I apologize if I mispronounced that name, to be followed by Ken Leighton.
Good afternoon, I'm Chad Phillips. I live in U Street, up here in Fire Mountain. Seeing as schools coming back in the session, I'm very concerned about the safety of my kids, at Palmquist, about the teachers, about everybody in all the schools, since the shooting last year in Texas. For a lot of parents, it was very hard for us to go to school. At the time of the shooting last year, I had called the principal of the school, I called the police department, spoke to both of them. My discussion with the police department didn't make me feel too good about the plans and what had happened. At that time, I had asked for some police presence around the school, and I was told that due to the lack of workers or police, that, you know, they can't have people just come by, but they recommended them to come by and wanted them to go by once in a while. This is the school year, I never saw one police officer there. That's okay, I know they're busy. I appreciate the police officers, thank you so much, I back them. So now that school's coming back in session, I wanted to bring it back up to everybody's consciousness that, hey, the parents are still scared, still worried. I did go to the school board meeting last night, and I asked some questions, and I was contacted today, and I was given a lot of information of the programs that happened this summer, as far as going through the schools and doing programs, things like that, this lockdown program. It made me feel a lot better. One thing I just want to bring up here, like I brought up there, is me, I talk to a lot of parents, of course, you know, but the agreement is that we want armed guards at the school. There's no reason why we should not have armed guards at the school. Just bringing this up, I don't know where to go for it, where to ask for this to happen, but if anybody can do anything for me, or for our kids, for our teachers, that would be wonderful. One thing I'm also asking for, and I'm going to reach out to the police department again also, is that we have some drive-bys in the morning to the school. I mean, just police officer driving by, just helps, you know? I ride my bike to school with my kids also. It's crazy around the schools, all in the neighborhood in Fire Mountain when I'm riding my bikes. If people know that a cop is driving by every morning around the school, around the neighborhood, maybe people slow down. I'm just asking for everybody to think about last year in Texas and all those kids and what happened, and do anything that we can to prevent it this year.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
My name's Chad Phillips.
Thank you.
Mala Enger, to be followed by Ken Leighton, to be followed by Sandra Martinez.
Thank you. I put something here, you can see it on. I won't be long. My name is Mala Enger. I'm representing William Allen, who's the king of Oceanside, is an artist in the city who's grown up here, and for the past five years... And for the past five years, he's been hosting an annual bookbag drive around this time. So this year is his fifth year doing it. It's been very grassroots, you know, it's growing little by little, but hasn't been really, really big yet, but one day, we hope it will be. It's near and dear to his heart and all of our hearts to give back to the community, provide, you know, bookbags and supplies to kids who may not have these things in school, and we don't want them demotivated, we want to support our young ones and our youth. We have flyers in the back, and so all the information is on the flyer, it looks like that, and on the other side has more information. We're giving out free bookbags and supplies, we'll have a jumper, music, some games and entertainment. We have an open invitation to everybody in the room. We hope that we just want to give you informations that you have this, if you can support or spread the word, that would be great. Anyone who wants to volunteer, donate, or attend, they are more than welcome to come. The first year, we gave out about 20 bookbags, the next year was about 40, about 100, and by the third year, this year, we're looking forward to give out about 150 or more. Thank you very much, and we hope to see somebody there, some of you there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ken Leighton, speaking only for myself, it's usually easy to tell the good guys from the bad guys. The council members and planning commissioners who want to pimp our city out with as many high-density tenements as possible, without corresponding infrastructure improvements, we've got your number. And to the city staff who trashed my neighborhood when they said one parking space for every three bedrooms is okay, thanks for destroying South O forever. But what is much worse, when those who have access to attorneys will, in the name of protecting our environment, sue a developer, take a big secret payoff, and the project proceeds with no meaningful changes? The developer of the hotel being built on Oceanside Boulevard near I-5 was sued after it was unveiled in 2018. It's nicknamed "The Prison Hotel" because of its lovely penitentiary aesthetics. The suit was filed by Friends of Loma Alta Creek, which described itself as "an unincorporated association that seeks to provide, protect the environment." This group appears to exist only to file lawsuits. Its Facebook page hasn't had a new entry in four years. That lawsuit was settled out of court, but the amount the developer paid to make it go away was kept confidential. How much was paid, and where did the money go? It's a secret. And what's worse, a city staffer told me that the only real changes to the plans was that three or four rooms was moved from one side of the building to the other. What a pointless, fraudulent suit. But wait, there's more. A couple years earlier, the development of, the developer of the Villastoria development near the Mission, near the San Luis Rey Mission, was also sued in the name of protecting our livability. That Newport Beach developer, the same one behind North River Farms, reportedly paid out $200,000, a figure that was to be kept secret, but was leaked recently by someone close to the City Hall at the time. But where did that money go? We don't know! This was another confidential lawsuit where the payout was kept secret. And what's worse, there were no changes to that development either. The development only had to, the developer only had to agree to pay the, for NCTD bus passes, and I'm not, that's not a joke. While some plaintiffs, like Diane Nygaard, seem sincere in attempting to keep massive projects less oppressive, there is nothing to keep other confidential, pointless legal shakedowns from proceeding, where the attorneys get paid and the plaintiffs cash out with secret payouts. Suing in the name of the environment seems to be a legal racket. Can someone in the city address this? Do we need to support a statewide law to keep these suits filed in the name of the public good from being kept private and secret?
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Sandra Martinez, to be followed by Susan Weir, to be followed by Diane Zerba.
Hi. I'm here today because the media refuses to do their job and report on harmful deceptive pharmaceutical practices. The COVID-19 vaccine bioweapon lacks long-term safety data. The current data clearly show they are neither effective, safe, nor stop the spread. President Biden is a prime example of the failure. He is quadruple injected and has had COVID twice, and was infectious for an unusually long time. I've spoken about the 40% increase in all cause death reported by the insurance companies in the US in 2021 in the past. This information was promoted on Good Morning San Diego in February. In addition, the Department of Defense information on the screen there, the DOD's medical database, the most accurate reporting system in the country, reported alarming increases in medical conditions. And I have had 16 of my friends and family members who have died from these vaccines, so-called vaccines. So you'll notice, heart attack is up 270%, cancer is up 300%, and that's not a small number, it's 20,000 cases as average in the medical database of the DOD, and now it's 120,000 cases in 2021. And you notice, blood clots and other neurological conditions are up over 1,000%. It's very significant. But what happened is, once this information became public, the DOD quickly changed five years of data, citing a computer glitch. To me, it's unbelievable that the military made such drastic errors unknowingly for five years. But the increase in the all-cause mortality or deaths from insurance companies can't be changed by government agencies. So the media fabricated causes, other than the COVID-19 vaccine that could be the culprit. This is what they came up with. First, they said it was because red states failed to report properly. Then they said it was climate change. Now they're saying it's falling asleep while watching TV, or falling asleep and lying on your side. And then they came up with gardening as an excuse, or exercising, or any other ridiculous thing you want to believe. Real science requires intellectual curiosity, asking uncomfortable questions, looking at the data, even if that data doesn't, doesn't match your previously held convictions, and then having the courage to change when we're wrong. Neither the state of California nor the county of San Diego is willing to have open scientific dialogue with opposing views about the ill effects of the vaccination program. I request that the city of Oceanside conduct a panel discussion on these concerns, and become a leader in truth, science, and in citizen well-being. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We are now on mayor and our council member items, and we're on...
We have two more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Susan Weir, to be followed by Diane Zerba.
Didn't mean to cut you off.
Good evening, my name is Susan Weir, and I'd like to address an issue regarding a piece of property on Mission Avenue. At 1806 Mission Avenue, it's between the Jack in the Box and the Casa de Nino Child Development Center. It started out with one homeless person there, and now it has become a homeless encampment, and it's in front of the Vintage Point Senior Apartments. I have tried to find information, there are signs that say "private property, do not trespass," but there's no contact information. They have been jumping over the fence and threatening elderly people, they have been stealing property, they have been loud and disruptive, and obviously, I'm not a doctor, but definitely either on some kind of mind-altering substance or possibly mentally ill. This has been reported to the police and to code enforcement. Something needs to be done, it's out of control. And I understand we're trying to make our city a better place, but let's start with the infrastructure, first of all, this is not okay.
Is that on Mission, or is it on Bush?
It's on Mission. It's on Mission, the Vintage Point Senior Apartments are on Bush. There's a, I think it might be a utility, I'm not sure, but they're coming over the fence, we have elderly people up into their 90s, and they're stealing things, they're threatening people.
So from like the Jack in the Box, and over the...
Yes, there's Jack in the Box, the utility thing with the fence where they're living, and then the Childcare Development Center, so...
Oh, I see, something de niños, on Mission Avenue.
It's, it's...
Casa de Ninos.
Yes, where there's small children, Monday through Friday.
Right.
And...
There's a vacant lot?
It's not vacant, it has some kind of electrical structures.
Okay.
There's no name, no company, no phone number, no way to contact.
Mr. Gossman, could you talk to Ms. Weir after she finishes her comments? My apologies.
I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to, you could speak to him outside?
Sure.
Thank you so much.
It's where the picnic and chicken used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was vacant, though.
It's vacant now.
But there's some kind of electrical...
Diane Zerba? You're up.
Diane Zerba?
Yeah.
Am I next?
You're next.
Hi. I live at 1701 Bush Street, corner of Bush and Archer, and we have so many cars speeding. We live in a senior community, and the, some people, they're afraid to cross the street because they just, they've got to be going 60, 70 miles an hour. At night, they even, motorcycles, they set off everybody's alarms that are parked on the street. I was wondering if you have any plans on getting a speed bump, or more stop signs on that street, because it's very dangerous.
Let's see, if, we have a couple of people out there, we've got Chief Armijo that's outside, speaking with Ms. Weir, and also from our city manager's office, Michael Gossman, if you would like to speak to them. Really appreciate that.
Yeah, I think we need more of a police presence on Bush Street.
Right.
Because people are even afraid to pull out of our community, because, you know, we look, and we don't see anybody coming, and then when we pull out, oh my God, there's somebody right on, you know, right on our rear end. It's, they're speeders, they're terrible, and...
Sometimes it's hard to see because, because cars are parked right on both sides, and it's very difficult to see.
I can't hear you.
Sometimes it's also difficult to see because, the street, because of the cars that are parked on both sides.
Yeah.
Visibility is challenging.
I wish we had a stop sign there for protection for these, you know, our community, so we can get out.
That would be a...
And then the cars would slow down, they'd have to stop.
That would be a...
And then Mission Avenue at night, oh my God, it's like a drag strip, it's like a Speedway. And these cars, do we have a noise ordinance on these loud cars that just, oh my God, they're just, it's like a drag racing area. And, you know, maybe we need more police, because I've never seen anyone being pulled over, getting a ticket.
Ms. Zerba, if you'd like to go outside and speak with the chief, and Mr. Gossman, and bring up your concerns, it is a very busy street out there, I think it probably would warrant a stop sign, because they are, it's where the shooting happened.
Oh, it's so loud. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I apologize to both Ms. Zerba and Ms. Weir, who's jumping, jumping forward. So back to the, or on to mayor and council member items. Item number 31, request by council members Rodriguez and Kime to direct staff to develop and implement minimum education and our professional experience requirements for the position of city treasurer. Who would like to speak?
As everyone knows, there's been some turmoil in our city treasurer's office. We have some very concerning allegations were made. I've been contacted by many people, asking what the city council is going, or how we're going to address it. I want to, at least I'll address this part of it first, I just want to confirm with the city attorney that there is an investigation ongoing right now, reference allegations made in the city treasurer's office?
Yes.
Okay. And at some point, are we going to receive a report or disposition of that investigation?
There will be communication from my office at the conclusion of that process, yes.
And the allegations are extremely concerning, but as everyone deserves, I'd like to wait till that investigation is completed before we address that specifically. However, this has also brought another issue to light, and that is the need to have qualifications for position of city treasurer. You know, it's, it's a watchdog, they don't actually, a city treasurer doesn't actually invest money, but it's tough to be a watchdog if you don't understand what you're watching. So, it's, you know, I can't be a watchdog for brain surgery down at Scripps, and I think that's something that we need to address. Other cities like Carlsbad have it. It's a very specific role you have as a city treasurer, it's different from city council. However, I left this very broad on purpose, this council agenda item, so staff can do research, figure out what the appropriate, either educational experience, professional experience would be, so that our public can still vote on a city treasurer, but also be confident that city treasurer can actually do the job that they're elected to do. And I think that's our concern right now, that we do have that competency. And I, one disappointing part of this is I specifically asked our treasurer yesterday if he would like to come today and address any of these educational requirements. He told me he wasn't required to. This is the second council meeting in a row where he hasn't come to council and addressed any concerns. So that also is very concerning to me. So I'd also like to hear what my colleagues feel about this.
I don't see any other lights, does anybody want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez, thank you very much for doing that.
So the city treasurer is not required to actually show up to any of the council meetings. Unlike us on council, they don't have to. The city treasurer is meant to be an elected watchdog for the people, but as my colleague referenced, if there's no credential or any sort of financial or education requirements, then that individual is not going to be a very good watchdog. We respect the democratic process in the vote, but when we're dealing with a position that doesn't make policy, like the council does, they don't set that policy, and they don't have to show up, I think it's important, and it's in the best interest for the future of our city, that we consider some recommendations that other jurisdictions are doing, and some potential requirements for that elected office when they run, the individuals that do run, and have that in a public setting, a future agenda item that the public can comment on. And, you know, we are dealing with a very awkward situation that's under investigation with our current city treasurer, who has missed several meetings, and especially an important one like this, where he can address the public and answer questions that we have. So I would just like to see direction of staff on potential criteria of the position of city treasurer as a credential requirement in order to run for that office.
Councilmember Jensen?
I would just like to add that I think at the same time, we should review and clarify the scope of authority for that position, so that it's very clear what the city treasurer can do and not do, so there's no confusion.
I don't think there's any confusion.
Well, I will say...
There's some confusion.
Sorry. I will say that at the next city council meeting, the city manager is bringing forward amendments to the investment policy that address that issue. So those will be before you on August 24th, I believe. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any requests to speak on this item?
We have four requests to speak on this item.
Okay, let's go to that.
Our first speaker is Mark Herman, to be followed by Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Ken Leighton.
Mayor Sanchez, Deputy Mayor Kime, city council members. My name is Mark Herman. I've owned my home in Fire Mountain for almost 20 years. I have also spent more than 40 years as an accountant and finance executive. I also hold a CPA certificate from my former state of Ohio. The idea that the city treasurer can hold that office without having a specific and proven background in finance management is absurd. The city treasurer... The city treasurer is responsible for ensuring the proper investment of more than $500 million of city funds. This is an extremely important position and not one that should be left to inexperienced amateurs. I have run enough finance departments in my life to know better than to hire inexperienced and underqualified people to work for me. The city of Oceanside also needs to ensure that someone eminently qualified is elected to the city treasurer position. We need someone in this position who has a proven track record of improving the financial condition of the organizations they work for, not someone who alienates the very staff they have to work with, and certainly not someone who doesn't seem to know better than to use the Wi-Fi at the public library to view inappropriate material. In closing, I urge the council to seriously consider and implement the recommendation by councilmembers Rodriguez and Kime to develop and implement minimum education and professional experience requirements for anyone running for the position of treasurer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. Also, I've ran for city treasurer a couple of times, and I can tell you, it was a very rewarding experience. And I can tell you also that the people that really was out there supporting me, it was very enhanced and self-enhancing in the sense of the people told me their issues, and I brought them forward to the Treasury Department, and we sunshine the office. It was closed, and the public said we wanted to open it to give their ideas. We opened it. We took and made sure that the public can give their ideas on how investments could be brought forward. That's what candidates can do when you run for office, and that doesn't count for qualifications. It's just what the heart wants to bring forward. But I want to address the Godzilla in the room. Mandating or legislating morality or restricting liberty leads to the establishment of a civil religion. And it opens the door, though, to some issues that need to be addressed. Number one, there's a need in Oceanside to have universal access for the internet to every home in this city. This will cut down on any excuse for whatever would take place. Then there is another issue, possible segregation, to have a mature section in our public library so they will not take and have any opportunity to separate out for youth and adults. And not knowing what was viewed, there is a difference between mere nudity, AKA Michelangelo's David, Venus de Marlo, as my mom said, innies and outies, and pornography. I can tell you, that really was healthy in growing up. It helped me in my studies with biology and into nursing and into being a paramedic because it helped me understand the human body. So we have to take and have an open mind, as well as one that says we have to provide access. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leighton?
Ken Leighton, speaking for myself and Jimmy Knott, thank you for explaining the innies and the outies of the Treasury Department. Although he couldn't, although he couldn't be here today, here's something to remind us of the jokes the treasurer has brought to bear on Oceanside. But his library soirees are hardly Victor Roy's, thank you, Jimmy, are hardly Victor Roy's biggest issues. Knowing that Victor Roy was elected with no financial background, I came before you over three years ago to ask that you establish basis, basic education and experience criteria for treasury candidates, just as Carlsbad has done successfully for years. You're finally listening now that Victor Roy has become internationally famous for all the wrong reasons. When he ran for office, Victor never explained why he also used the name Victor Roy Nash. Nobody tells us anything about his education or employment background, except that he worked in the airline industry, which he never proved. Late Treasurer Rosemary Jones famously protected Oceanside when she stood up to a Ponzi scheme peddled by Dick Lyon. Well, all that's in reverse with Victor Roy. If you take him out to lunch, he'll lobby for your high commission, high-risk investments. According to city staff, Mr. Roy just wants the city to do business with the guy who bought him lunch. When Mr. Roy chaired the investment committee recently, he berated city staff and prevented the assistant city manager from speaking. This Brown Act violation forced the city to reschedule and redo the entire meeting. He also said that the city manager was fired. Two weeks later, he had to correct his unprofessional slur. Not only did Victor Roy illegally ask a city employee to give him campaign money, he asked that it be done in such a way so it wouldn't be noticed. If any city staffer behaved like Victor Roy, they would be out the door. I implore this council to tell Victor Roy that he just needs to go away. The good news is Victor Roy has no real impact because the city set it up so the city treasurer cannot diddle, wrong word, cannot diddle in sketchy scams. He has no real duties, yet he gets paid more than the city clerk who oversees a staff of nine. That department does a flawless job, yet the hapless library lurker with no real job duties gets paid more? What the hell? Employees now say Victor comes in City Hall after hours to watch TV and leaves with the janitors. It's like City Hall has become Victor Roy daycare, but it's in the evenings. Thank you.
Arlene Hammerschmidt?
Good evening, Arlene Hammerschmidt, resident of ruralish Fire Mountain. I represent only myself. I have a question I would like the city attorney to answer, please, for the public. What are the duties and responsibilities of the city treasurer? Regarding the way that this was presented on the agenda, additional material later, shouldn't there at least be some comment in there about why to give the public some informational basis to make an informed comment? More information later is not transparent, is not conducive to trust, I call BS. I find it very interesting, very interesting, in the words of Charlie Chan, and often used by one of our council members, that the same persons sitting here who tried to take away the people's power of the vote and make the treasurer an appointed position now want the treasurer's office, the treasurer, to have more requirements to run for office than yourselves have. You couldn't pass the muster of what you're suggesting here. I really think that's discriminatory, exclusive, and absurd, frankly. Everybody should be able to run for public office. It's up to the public to have information that they can make a positive, solid decision on, that the same people who use the term "very interesting" also tried to pressure the treasurer to resign. Ha! We know what is up with that action. If the treasurer could be pressured to resign, the majority of council would appoint yet another yes person to fill a seat. Another BS. I would really like an answer to the question, Mr. Mullen. Maybe council would have to ask it. Pardon? I am finished. Thank you very much for your time. I'll sit down.
Could you please?
The city treasurer's duties are set forth in Section 2.18 of our city code. There are some provisions of state code, but eventually, essentially, it's to oversee the investment of the investment, the investment of our city funds and to ensure compliance with our investment policy that is annually reviewed by the city council. So we have an investment portfolio of approximately half a billion dollars, and the city treasurer's job is to make sure that the investments are done in accordance with the investment policy. The day-to-day work is done by the treasury manager. The city treasurer is supposed to provide oversight to that function. But the specific details are set forth really within the investment policy, and as I mentioned in my last answer, amendments to those are coming before the city council on August 24th.
Thank you, the public. No more public comments, so back to the council. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I'd like to make a motion for staff to bring back the city manager. How long do you think you need to bring back some criteria? 30, 60 days?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest 30 days.
Okay. If you could bring back some credentials, maybe that align with other jurisdictions that have been appropriate, so we can review and potentially move on changes to the criteria of requirements to run for city treasurer.
Deputy Mayor Kime?
I'll second that motion. And just to clarify, a council agenda item, it's specifically, it's the beginning of a conversation. That's how this works. We haven't discussed this, about what the requirements are going to be. This is the way that we do it, so you don't violate the Brown Act. We're coming here today to get a majority of council to approve giving that direction to staff to come back with that. And again, we'll have another conversation with those specific requirements. Will be a staff report, I'm assuming, and then we can have that conversation. So we just don't, there has been no information provided because staff has to have that direction to do that. So I will second that motion. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. I was hoping that when we, when this was being, going to be brought forward, it was going to be more generic, more objective, less character assassination, especially while there is a, an investigation going on. So I'm really disappointed in the conversation. We, there are, there's a serious allegation that was made by a person, one person, and I asked the city, city attorney, hey, was it cosmopolitan? What was it? We don't know. We have a one-page memo that is very vague, that was produced from a year ago. A year ago. And I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to listen to, I was listening to the nexus between what happened a year ago in a library and item number 31. Mr. Mullen, did you say that you looked into the requirements for state treasurer? For the state of California?
I've looked at, not, not comprehensively, but I have been looking at requirements of other jurisdictions, I believe, including the state. I think, I think maybe the assistant city manager might have shared that with me, yes.
Did you say that there are no requirements for state treasurer?
I think they're comparable to what our, you know, Oceanside has, but like the county of tax collector and treasurer has very specific requirements, so it varies. Yeah, I think at the state level, if I'm not mistaken, it's basically a registered voter. Typical, typical type of requirements that we have for council office.
These are, this is an elected position. It is, it is at election time that people decide whether or not, you know, that they can ask questions about qualifications. Mr. Roy ran twice, right? 2016 and 2020? And he was, he was elected, then re-elected. So I think that this is more of an election issue than it is of, you know, let's have some qualifications. I'm concerned that, that we didn't wait until after the investigation so that Mr. Roy could then participate in this, or at least respond to some of these comments and questions. I, I would like us to have a more objective discussion next time. I'm sure, I mean, I don't have a finance background, and yet we, we talk about finance. I do have an urban studies, urban planning background and a legal background, and so that certainly helps me to, to read the, read and ask questions, and, and also I look to the community. My job is, is not a watchdog. It's, it's actually to make decisions. The city treasurer doesn't have access to the investment portfolio. Only one person does. And I have to say that I certainly appreciate very much that Mr. Roy was able to shed light on the fact that we have only one person who has access to our almost half a billion-dollar investment portfolio, one person who could do something, you know? And with all of these questions that he was asking, apparently, the last person who had this position was a person of trust, and everything went smoothly. They were not these issues that were raised. We have a person who retires, and then we get a new person, and then there are issues. So I am really thankful that these issues have been brought up. I'm really looking forward to seeing what staff has come up, is coming up with in terms of ensuring that we have more checks and balances, because our portfolio, something could happen to our portfolio and one person, only one person having access, and how does, who is not even managed by Mr. Roy, it's managed by somebody else who may not catch that. So I, I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Roy, and I did say, you know, listen, maybe we need some minimum requirements. Maybe we do. But having said that to him, and then listening to the conversation here on the dais, it's two damn different things. You know, we've got, oh, you know, going after a guy because of something that happened last summer that has nothing to do with his requirements or qualifications for city treasurer, and then here we are, coming down on him over what? How many of us have made mistakes? How many, as a, as a public official, you live a very public lifestyle, and some of us couldn't do it. I mean, I have trouble doing it sometimes, you know? Very, very public lifestyle. So I probably would have voted yes to this, but based on the comments that were made and the character assassination, you know, I mean, I guess we'll know in 2024 whether he decides to run for reelection or not, and what, and what the voters decide, if he does. But at this time, I don't really think that this would really do anything. We voters, and I count myself as one, always have the opportunity to ask candidates what their qualifications are. And if people get voted in, it's because they have a good relationship with the community. And apparently, Mr. Roy does and did. So let's vote, or Deputy Mayor Kime, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, I think we're conflating the issue. If you. If you look at item 31, it's a request by councilmember Rodriguez and myself to direct staff develop and implement minimum education or professional experience requirements. Nothing about the investigation. This is very specific. I worded it that way on purpose. So up here, I specifically, if you remember my comments, said-
Oh, I listened to your comments very carefully.
Okay.
I did.
So, we're going to wait to the investigation. That has nothing to do with this. This is about having someone qualified in the position of treasurer. If you don't feel that that's important, then, then that's the way you'll vote. But that was what this issue was about, was specifically for requirements. We are not delving into the investigation. That'll get addressed later, which is also concerning, but that's not tonight's action. So please don't conflate the issues, and there is a motion and a second. I'd like to vote.
Mr. Keim, I know that you have not liked and have been very critical of Mr. Roy, have asked him very pointed questions about investments in portfolio and what he has done in terms of investments, and I guess you now learned that he actually doesn't have that authority, that it's actually someone from the, that works for the finance department as well.
Yes, I asked questions of the treasurer that oversees our money if he has specific knowledge, reference investments.
You have implied, you have implied that he actually has actually made decisions on our investment portfolio, and that somehow we lost money over it.
I'd like to call for the question.
And I just want to say, oh, I'm, I'm finishing here, because I still have, I guess, two minutes, that we need to stop these personal attacks, because the public expects more from us.
Mayor, there's no personal attacks from anyone on the dais.
The public expects us to work together, and if at election time-
I'd like to call for the question, please.
Yes, as soon as I finish. At time, at election time-
You called for the question, that's a question.
When, yeah, as soon as I finish, and then you can do that.
That's not how it works.
Except that we're going to go ahead and, and vote.
Call for the question, vote.
That we have the opportunity to decide who we want as either treasurer or city clerk, mayor or city council members. Let's vote with one minute, 36 minutes to spare.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Item number 32 is request by councilmembers Rodriguez and Johnson for council discussion regarding Oceanside's current homeless population count and direction to staff concerning city efforts moving forward. And who would that be?
I can, go real quick. Really quick, I want this to be a super fast agenda item. Since I actually brought this forward, I've had several discussions with staff. The point-in-time count is an annual requirement in order for, it's just, it's a requirement. The city of Oceanside has to participate. They have a whole in-depth program and process and partnership regionally. Oceanside is a unique city. We have our riverbed, we have a lot of nooks and crannies in, in inaccessible areas, and we're making decisions on policies surrounding hundreds and thousands of dollars, and it's important that our count is accurate. And so this conversation was brought forward so that we could bring attention to the fact that it maybe in the past wasn't as accurate as it should be. However, this last point-in-time count, which actually showed an increase in the amount of homeless counted, was due to some protocol changes by city staff, by the police department and our hot team on actually going above and beyond and doing an even more thorough point-in-time count with some additional procedures. And so I just want to be able to continue that, because I think our policies and our financial decisions need to be based on accurate counts, and I understand people are coming and going, but it will be helpful if the same protocols are implemented year after year that accurately count, for example, the riverbed. You know, how can we go about counting the riverbed? You know, maybe we have to go out at a safer time than at midnight. I don't know what that looks like. So with that being said, I asked the assistant city manager to come up, and we received a weekly update on the homeless. We get a weekly update as council, and I was very impressed by some of those updates. And so I would just like you to maybe present that to the public, so they can have some updates on what's happening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate that opportunity to give you that update on the significant efforts that staff has made, and really what has become the top priority for the city. To start with, you know, we've organized a cross-departmental team that meets on a bi-weekly basis to strategize, plan, and execute initiatives designed to address the quality of life issues that the problem of homelessness brings upon the entire community, both housed and unhoused. Meeting regularly like that allows us to be flexible, adaptable, and try outside-the-box ideas that hitherto we really hadn't done. It also allows us to change course if a particular effort isn't showing measurable resort, results, and that's something that I think gets back to what you were saying about how we've adapted in terms of the point-in-time count, to make sure that we're being as accurate as possible. So some recent efforts that the city has done, based on this, this sort of working group, the city has executed a contract with Kart Retrieval Services Incorporated. This firm will collect any shopping cart found in the city or reported to customer care, regardless of its owner, and if unclaimed, will be taken to a landfill. This should reduce the number of abandoned carts around the city. And back to that measurable piece, we'll be reporting back to you on a monthly basis the number of carts collected. We want to make sure that we're not throwing good money after bad. The good news on the cart collection thing, they only get paid if they pick up a cart, so we hope that that's going to be effective. Another thing that we've done, the engineering department, is wrapping up design work on the closure of Lagoon View Drive, and that should be complete within the next few weeks. Staff has negotiated an amendment to the contract with Rancho Santa Fe Security to provide armed patrols of the Oceanside Transit Center and the parking garage in response to an increase in complaints regarding illicit activity at this facility. The cost of this will be shared with NCTD. OPD staff has conducted a SEPTED, or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Analysis, of the OTC parking garage, and public work staff are working to implement the recommendations of that report, which includes things like adding a security cameras, lighting, repairing damaged fixtures, and providing enhanced cleaning services. A similar SEPTED report and action plan are being prepared for the alley between Tremont and the bus terminal, which is the source of many complaints. And staff is partnering with Main Street Oceanside to create a more robust, proactive security presence in the downtown area to reduce vagrancy and crime, and staff will be bringing a proposal for such a program to council in September or October. Staff is negotiating with SING Group, who currently does our encampment cleanups, one of the groups that does our encampment cleanups, to bring in another encampment cleanup team to increase the number of cleanups we can do on a weekly basis, and OPD is looking for ways that they can expand their ability to do those cleanups. This would essentially triple the amount of resources we have dedicated to encampment cleanup. And I'll just wrap up real quickly with some, some key statistics, some of the, in addition to the enforcement efforts, HOT since January 22 has assisted 486 people, provided over 1,000 services, which includes everything from emergency shelter to mental health assessments, to referrals to service providers, to food assistance, provided temporary shelter to 80 individuals, and of significant note, have provided permanent housing to four individuals. Those are people that are no longer homeless. And again, that's just since January 2022. The encampment cleanup team with the SING Group, the one I just referred to, along with code enforcement staff, OPD staff, and public work staff, removed 3,050 bags of trash in July alone. In July, San Diego Rescue Mission took over management of our hotel voucher program, and will continue to manage it until the navigation center is up and running. And although development of the navigation center is taking a little longer than we would like, the Rescue Mission continues to make progress, and we regularly meet with them to ensure that things continue to progress as much as possible, and anything that the city can do to clear the path and make that happen, we're doing. I've asked staff to reach out to each council member, and I believe they did so today, to offer a tour of the site of the navigation center, which would include a briefing from San Diego Rescue Mission on their vision for the location and any update on progress thus far. And I'm here to answer any questions, so is the chief, and so is Neighborhood Services.
Thank you. Just with the overwhelming amount of feedback, since I, we moved forward on this council agenda item, I'm personally satisfied with the enhanced approach to the annual point-in-time count. I think that's very important to future policy decisions, once my term is up and another council member takes over, and just the future of our city. So I don't, I don't see the need to make a motion unless you had some additional feedback.
No, I don't see the need, and thank you-
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you for that report. You guys are doing an excellent job, and Katie Taylor for bringing the cart retrieval and the closing of Lagoon View Drive. I think that's excellent, and I think we're headed in the right direction, and you're doing an excellent job, so I'm very happy.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We have two requests to speak on this item.
There's no motion. Do we, there's no motion, right?
There's no motion.
Do you still want to speak? What, who is it?
Katie Taylor and Drew Andreyoff.
Do you all want to speak on this? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, Katie.
Oh, you're up first.
And by the way, thank you, Michael Gossman. Okay, this gentleman, I showed you the pictures earlier of the two vans and the car. This gentleman was just west of those cars. So this is also on the day the new school was opening across the street. So I called the non-emergency line of the police department, and the person, the dispatcher on the phone says, well, can you walk around him? And I said, well, yeah, I'm in my car. I don't need to walk around him, but he's, and I won't tell you, his pants were down below his buttocks, and I won't even bother to tell you where his hand was. And I've, if you blow up the picture, you can see exactly where it was. So my conversation with dispatch, what was interesting, they said, well, as long as he's not impeding traffic, and you can walk around him. So I had a further conversation, I've had two conversations with police officers. So I am so grateful. I live in a street in Fire Mountain with no sidewalks, because the bottom line, everybody, we have work to do, because that man or any homeless person can sleep on our sidewalks for as long as they want, as long as somebody can walk around them. So think about that. And this person was right across the street from a school. I came back later, he was more in the middle of the street. He was there for almost two days. So as we congratulate ourselves, and I do think some heavy, heavy lifting is being done, this has to be addressed. Like I say, I'm forever grateful I do not have sidewalks in front of my house. South Oceanside, you're worried about density? People like this can sleep right in front of your house as long as somebody can walk around them. And if I'm wrong, please, somebody correct me, but that's directly what I heard from the police department. So I don't care what street you're on, you got a sidewalk, that person can lay on that sidewalk as long as you can move around them. And that's not right. We got to figure this out. This could really, really start sending us downhill. And my last comment, and I thank you for your patience, in talking about the police department, I want to read you something. Officers killed this year. The number and parts of organizations mid-year report officer fatalities found that so far this year, 129 federal, state, tribal, and local officers died in the line in duty. 129. I would like to start talking about them and not worrying about the bums and the people who create crime in our city. We, and that's why I don't want the police commission, because it's going to make them hold back, and that could someday lead to them being killed.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, council and mayor. Appreciate you being here tonight. I hope everybody had a good break. I do appreciate that the council's kind of bringing back the homeless, and we're having this further discussion, and I know you guys are meeting weekly on this and trying to make headway, but I know you're handcuffed by a lot of regulations. There is stuff that we can do that I hope that the council will look at potentially implementing. If you've driven around Roymar, or you've been in the industrial park, the council's already adopted measures on some of these RVs that are living there. It has caused a lot of fires within that community, and it's something that we need to start enforcing. This is something you guys already have on the books, it's just something that we need to pursue. Another thing that, you know, look, I'm, I'm six foot, I'm 250, I played hockey growing up, so I'm, I'm used to being physical with people. But if you walk downtown and you walk around the strand and the pier late at night, you got a lot of unsavory characters down there, and I really would like to see direction from the council to go through and start putting officers on the street down there and doing some community enforcement. There's a lot of people who still don't feel comfortable. We've put so much investment in downtown and townsite, and the city's looking beautiful. I'm really, really excited about the direction we're going. And if you look at the hotels who have implemented private security down there, you don't see a lot of those people hanging right around the hotels. It is working, so what we need to do is just push forward and have that enforcement in that area. It needs to be a safe area for people, if we want to continue the development, continue the revitalization of the downtown district. So those are things that we can do. And I, I know that everyone's telling us that OPD's having trouble hiring people, and that there's a lack of staff, things like that, but if you drive down the 76, we got a lot of officers who are pulling people over, going to work every morning. I don't, I don't feel that's right. Look, I'm a safety guy. I want to make sure that we're doing the best thing for our citizens, but if we can't have people walking around feeling safe downtown, where we put all this money into, and we're getting people pulled over left and right on the 76, it just, it doesn't feel right to us as citizens who are working and paying taxes and, and supporting Measure X for to fund public safety. So these are things that you do. And as far as the carts, I, I know it feels like we're doing something with collection of the carts, but the problem is we're not. I mean, the carts are all over the place. I don't even want to shop with them, because I don't know where they've been. They're so filthy, they're so disgusting. You see everyone carrying around trash and garbage in it. I wouldn't want to put my food in there. What this council can do, and again, I'm, I'm a business guy, I have my business here in Oceanside, so I hate putting further restrictions on other businesses, but you guys can't implement mag locks on the parking lot, so we don't have carts leaving.
Can you round up your comments?
Yeah, just give me one more second, and, and that way, we're not chasing around a problem. We're being proactive rather than react.
Thank you. Okay, we're now, oh, before we finish, because I guess there was no motion, but I do want to say, thank you very much, chief, and thank you also to code enforcement, and also Mr. Gossman, for, because every time I put out a, a request from, from a complaint, from a client, from a constituent about a homeless encampment or something to that effect, you all have been acting so quickly, and really, really appreciate it, especially getting back to people. That is certainly appreciated. I get comments back saying, oh, my gosh, I got contacted, like, within that day. So thank you, Mr. Gossman. Thank you, Chief Armijo, and also thank you to Kurt Munt from Code Enforcement for working so quickly on these items, and thank you, Mr. Borrego, for saying it's okay to get all this stuff done so quickly. I know that we have the new car wash in the valley, you know, you guys cleaned that up. I stopped by there, and everything was clean on there, so thank you very much. I think it went over to another street, though, so we have to work on that street now, but thank you. What was that?
It's on Roymar.
Roymar, yeah. I was going to go down there and take pictures, because someone called me, but I kind of asked people to send me the pictures, because that's what we need, are the pictures, so that they know exactly where the site is. All right, thank you very much. We're now on general council member comments. Any requests to speak on this? So, so tomorrow is August 11th. We've got the 14th Annual North County Health and Wellness Fair, right here in the Civic Center, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It coincides with the farmer's market at the same time, and again, you heard that we're having the 30th annual, 30th anniversary of the farmer's market, so they're going to, it's a celebration, they're also going to be having some giveaways, and also tomorrow, Mysteries and Histories Live at the Brooks, Sunshine Brooks Theater at 7:30. This weekend, starting Friday, Friday through Sunday, we have the Oceanside Longboard Surfing Club Contest and Beach Fair, so that's happening, and that's always a great event. Next Thursday, August 18th, we have the Sunset Markets Celebration of 15th Anniversary, and again, that's five to nine. This Saturday, though, we are dedicating the William A. Wagner Aquatic Center at 9:00 AM, so come on down, you know, join the Wagner family for this really, really wonderful dedication. And also tomorrow, I mean, Saturday, we have the Right on Oceanside. Come and join all the authors that we have here in Oceanside. They have some, they're going to have many of their books, and some of them are going to read. This is what happened last year, veterans as well. It's just really, really a very nice event, and that's at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and that's at the Civic Center. We're going to go ahead and adjourn to the next meeting, which is Wednesday, August 24th at 3:30. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.